Good evening and welcome to the October 28, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development standards, development proposals, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Some of the items the Planning Commission has final decision authority and others, the City Council will make the final decision. Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer members from the community appointed for up to three years at a time and for a maximum of six years. So tonight, we have seven items in front of us. Two of those will be public hearing. But before we begin tonight, let's stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and before we begin tonight, I'll ask Mr. Markergard if you can give our instructions for folks following along at home.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, we're in person tonight, and the public can testify at the public hearings in person, but they can also testify remotely if they prefer. And to do so, you would call 1-888-742-5095. And then, once you're online there, enter the conference code 846-100-1098 and pound. So we will have this number scrolling across the screen during the public hearing items tonight, and anybody can call in and testify remotely.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markergard. With that, we'll move on to item number one, which was the South Town Redevelopment Proposal. And Commission members, we did receive a request from the applicant to continue that item until the November 18 Planning Commission meeting. So at this point, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Roman?
Mr. Chair, move to continue item one to November 18.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion. Is there a second? All right, Commissioner Corman, thank you. All right, Planning Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to continue PL 2021-182 to the November 18 Planning Commission meeting. Any further discussion on that item? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number two, which is preliminary and final plat at 4301 Overlook Drive. Mr. Johnson, you have a staff report for us.
Thank you, Chair Solberg. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I have a Type III preliminary and final plat for you this evening. It's a one-to-two residential lot split. The property is located at 4301 Overlook Drive. It's just to the west of France Avenue, down on Overlook, down just north of Coleman Lake, the Minnesota River. It's a very long rectangular property. It's 3.5 acres in size approximately. The proposed split would be effectively right down the middle of the property from north to south. The property is about 200 feet at the roadway, so they'd be creating two 100-foot lots. The required minimum lot width in this area, based on our median site width requirements, is 82 feet, so they have to maintain that lot width up through a certain distance of the property. These lots far exceed the minimum lot area requirements in our R1 Single Family zoning district, so no issue there. All the structure setbacks to the existing home, that would be retained on the eastern lot. All the structure setbacks meet code. There's no current plan for disturbance or new single-family dwelling at this time. This is being done by the current owner to sell the western lot to a different party at a future date. The only issue I'll bring up here is that there is currently a non-conforming setback to the retaining wall at the southwest corner of the house, as you can see in kind of the central portion of the slide. So they will have to adjust that interior lot line just slightly in order to meet that setback requirement. This is the final plat document, pretty straightforward. They're providing the necessary and minimum required drainage and utility easements. Again, just splitting it into two sites. Just touch on a couple things. Our code does require sidewalks for new residential subdivisions, although it does give the Council the authority to waive that requirement when it doesn't connect to an existing public sidewalk, which is the case here. Staff is supportive of this approach in this case, of that approach in this case, rather. The applicant be required to pay a park dedication fee for another residential unit. The site is subject to tree preservation ordinance, which requires, it's valid for a two-year period following recording of the plat, so they have to track. Any tree removal during that time would need to be consulted with the city forester. Both properties and the existing property are also subject to the Bluff Protection Overlay zoning district, which includes some additional restrictions and protections for tree removal, grading, other activity below a certain contour, kind of just south of the house. And there is the possibility that some of the utility service lines that would serve a future home on the western lot could cross each other's properties a little bit. If that's the case, that'll be addressed at the time of future home construction, but the property would be well-advised to enter into a private utility agreement, just to give both houses the right to maintain those systems. And we did receive one email prior to publication of the packet. It was supportive of the application. The second email we received earlier this week did note concern about tree removal. You have that as a handout in front of you and was emailed to you as well. But other than that, both lots meet our code requirements. The applicant is in attendance this evening, Maxine Rosini, so if you have any questions for her, otherwise, staff is recommending approval.
All right, thank. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for staff on this? Go ahead, Commissioner Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, just for the benefit of the commission and for any of the public, after the two-year tree preservation requirement, is there anything that stops a future property owner from removing all trees on a lot?
Yeah. Chairman Commissioner Roman, there would not be outside of the Bluff Protection Overlay district. So that two-year period is a feature of our tree preservation ordinance currently.
Thank you. And this may be more of a question for Mr. Markergard, but I think we had something regarding the tree preservation on either this year's work plan or maybe next year? I seem to recall a discussion about that topic.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roman, we don't have anything.
Okay.
We're currently working on the 2022 work plan, so that's something the Planning Commission is interested in. You could definitely bring it up.
No problem. Thank you for reminding me. All right. Any further questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, the park dedication fee, do we differentiate between commercial tenants versus private homeowners? Is there, are we being overly burdensome on a private homeowner versus a commercial entity?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner Cookton, there is a different rate, so they pay a different fee. If you're doing a commercial development, you'd likely be paying a higher rate than a single-family dwelling, although multifamily, if you're doing a lot of units, then you'd be paying a much higher fee. So it's hard to do an equivalency, but a residential unit is paying a higher rate per unit than a commercial use, because that generates more park use than a commercial land use does. But a single-family home, the assessing division is the one who collects that fee and tracks it, but it's approximately $5,600 per dwelling unit for one park fee for a house.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other commissioners with questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Could you bring up the overview of the map with the property? So one of the questions I have... Oh, thank you. One of the questions I have is, you know, with the division of these two, or this property in O2, thinking about, you know, the width and the setback requirements of both properties, with the property being so narrow, will there be any concerns about building another home on the property, either from what we're seeing here, east to west, or even north to south?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, there certainly will be an adequate building pad. I mean, over 90 feet is wider than a lot of the lots in Bloomington, so they certainly will have an adequate building pad. They'll just have to meet those setback requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further comments or questions for staff on this item? All right, not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Rosini, would you like to speak to the item at all before we open the public hearing?
Well, not really, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, we'll open the public hearing on this item. And Mr. Markergard, do we have anybody online that would like to speak to this item?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, let me check in with Mr. Pease on the phone. Mr. Pease, do we have any callers on the line?
There are no callers on the line. Proceed.
Thank you.
All right, Commission members, seeing nobody in the facility here tonight, nor online, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Go ahead, Commissioner?
So moved.
All right. Commissioner Albrecht has motioned to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Goldsman, we've got a second. All right, Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion on that? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Public hearing is now closed on this item. Discussion, Planning Commission members? I'll just throw in my two cents. I walk by this quite often. It's pretty close to my house. It's a beautiful, beautiful house. The only thing here was really the setbacks to the retaining wall. As long as that's addressed and the revisions here to the plat, I'm in support of the item moving forward. All right, with that, Commission members, if there's no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL 2021-196, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat of Rosini addition, splitting one single-family residential lot located at 4301 Overlook Drive into two lots, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
All right, Commission members, we have a motion in front of us. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. All right, Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat of Rosini addition, splitting one single-family residential lot located at 4301 Overlook Drive into two lots, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report. Is there any further discussion on this item? Not seeing any? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That moves forward to City Council, November 8, on the consent agenda. Moving on to item number three, which is code amendment for high-density motor vehicle sales. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Thanks, Chair. Members of the commission, I'll just swap my slides here, sorry for that.
We'll move fast for you.
Oh, yeah. Item three is a privately initiated city code amendment submitted by United Properties. They seek to create a new use designation and make it a permitted use in two of our commercial zoning districts. The privately initiated city code amendment would create the use motor vehicle sales high-density, and it would designate this use as a permitted use in C1 and C3, which is two of our freeway-oriented commercial zoning districts. United Properties is seeking to create a high-density motor vehicle sales facility somewhere in Bloomington. This is the definition itself. I'll read it out for you, and just to note for the public and for your benefit, you do have a handout on your desk, which is the actual ordinance itself. There was some conflicting information in the staff report, which referenced a prior version of the applicant's requested city ordinance, as it pertains specifically to repair. But the correct version is here on the screen before you and was correct in the ordinance within the packet, but it says, "The sale, brokering," I believe it's resale, hold on, "or lease of newer used motor vehicles in a multi-level, fully enclosed structure on the site with a floor area ratio of .6 or higher where vehicles for sale, resale, or lease are stored and displayed within a completely enclosed building on the premises of the business, except for 30 motor vehicles that may be stored or displayed outdoors. The use may also include minor vehicle repair limited to 25% of total floor area. No more than three overhead service doors may be visible from a public street, with no more than two overhead service doors within 50 feet of each other. All component uses require parking in accordance with the city codes section pertaining to off-street parking." So I just want to highlight a couple things here. One is that it has to be a multi-level, fully enclosed structure. That's a critical feature of this use. The .6 minimum floor area ratio is a fairly high FAR. Our current FAR for new auto sales facilities in the C1 district, for example, is 0.4. So this is higher than what a typical dealership hat would have to be in Bloomington. There is some allowance for outdoor display. Certainly, when you think of Class I motor vehicle sales facilities, you're thinking of large amounts of surface parking where they store auto inventory that's visible to the public. So this has some allowance for that, but not a great deal, 30 cars. And it does allow for some vehicle repair, although I want to highlight that it is limited to minor vehicle repair. So repair in our code is broken up into what types of repair activities you do. Major repair includes large or more intense engine work, as well as auto body repair. Minor repair includes a majority of other activities. Auto body and the major engine repair would not be allowed within this facility. And then, there's also some restrictions about the aspect of the repair, specifically to the amount of floor area and the amount of overhead service doors. This was the change that caused the previous continuance on the part of the applicant had to do with the specific language about repair. One second here. Okay. So our city code currently has five types of motor vehicle repair. They're listed there on the screen. The type that is most similar to what is being proposed here before this evening, a sixth type, is the motor vehicle sales enclosed use. At that time, that was created in 2006, when the city was getting a lot of motor vehicle sales facilities in the city. And the city, Glenn actually worked on that ordinance, I believe, so he could give you even more detail than I can. But the idea with enclosed motor vehicle sales is that we could incentivize, by allowing it in more districts, you could incentivize more of these facilities to be fully enclosed, as opposed to the lots of auto inventory on surface parking. Not many of the, none of those uses, I believe, have come to fruition, but that was the idea behind it. So this new use is most similar to enclosed. The trade-off to allowing these 30 motor vehicles to be stored outside is that you get, you're guaranteed to get a multi-story facility with a minimum FAR of .6. So the reason why we implement those high FARs is we want to avoid an underutilization of land on these key sites along the 494, the freeway. So that's really the key feature here. This just shows the use table as shown in the ordinance. So again, it would make this use permitted in the C1 and C3 zoning districts, freeway office and service, and freeway commercial center, respectively. This is where those sites that are currently have that zoning designation are located. There's 11 sites. They're all located along 494 currently, in between Normandale and around Lyndale Avenue, and American, bounded by American Boulevard, too. The zoning districts themselves, they both are intended to be commercial zoning districts that benefit from proximity to freeways and have high visibility. So certainly, that makes sense for high-density auto sales. And then, they also both seek to avoid underutilization of land. Those are both in the purpose and intent statements, and I have those available if anyone wants to review them. So from staff perspective, this use works. It makes sense in C1 and C3. C1 is actually the zoning district that is really intended for motor vehicle sales facilities, and then C3 is intended as a high-intensity retail-type district near the freeway. So one of the key features of, there was kind of not a wrestling, but there's a discussion about whether to make it a permitted versus a conditional use. Just for the record, all of our other motor vehicle sales uses are permitted uses in this district, and the reason being is that the city developed a fairly extensive list of performance standards for these facilities already. And these performance standards would be subject to this new use as well. As you can see in the table on the slide previously here, you can see that particular code section listed by reference on the right there. So our performance standards for motor vehicle sales facilities, they include restrictions on noise, repair and service activities, vehicle test driving, vehicle storage and display, and vehicle loading-unloading. So the intention of these standards is really to kind of wrestle with or address some of the nuisance characteristics that can arise in these types of facilities. So with that, staff is recommending approval. Happy to take any questions about it. I believe a representative of United Properties is also on the call, or should be, should there be any questions of the applicant.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Commission members, any questions for Mr. Johnson on this item? Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for clarification, can any of the restrictions listed in the definition be varied? If I'm a new applicant or a new user coming into a site that finds a building that's less than 0.6 FAR for a building, can I come in and say, "I want to go into this site, possibly not request a rezoning because the site is already correctly zoned for the use, but if I'm not meeting the restrictions listed in the definition, can those be varied or is that just a walk-away deal?"
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Abdi, that's an excellent question, and I'll see if Glenn agrees with my interpretation, but I would say that you cannot, because it is definitional to the use. It's not a performance standard, like many of our other standards in Chapter 21, where they require by district. This is in the definition of the use. So my interpretation would be is that you cannot request flexibility to those baseline standards that are inherent to the use itself. Would you agree?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abdi, we don't have an attorney here present tonight. I would agree with Mr. Johnson, though, that because those standards are in the definition, to vary from them would essentially be a use variance, which is prohibited under state law. So I do agree with that.
All right. Commissioner Abdi?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Goldsman?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. My question actually is around the overhead service doors. And when I see the section above, it says they would, service bays would have to be fully screened from view of any public street. However, in this newly added verbiage, we talk about how the service doors may be visible from a public street. So can you talk a little bit about how these two uses differ and why screening was required in one and not both?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, so the first version that you were reading was the initial application that the applicant made, and they since revised and amended their application to strike that language. That was the language that mirrored that of the definition of enclosed, of the enclosed motor vehicle sales facility. And so upon further consultation with their end user, who they're working with to create this development, that the restriction of six service bays was not workable to the end user. So in terms of what is being, what was revised and what is being proposed to you this evening, so you don't need to fully screen a service door, but you are limited to three facing a public street. You could have no more than that. And then furthermore, the restriction that having to do with, and the Chair and I were just brought this up just very briefly before the meeting, but the restriction on no more than two being grouped together, what that's intended to do is not have a typical, where you see an automotive repair use, where they have six or eight, or you see all those service doors lined up, and that takes on a very industrial or kind of that characteristic of appearance. The restriction pertaining to the number of doors being grouped together seeks to kind of eliminate that possibility. So screening is not required, but you're limited to three overhead doors that are used for service, for the repair use.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, do we have any buildings that are doing motor vehicle sales within the city of Bloomington that would qualify as this high-density motor vehicle sales? Or is this brand-new, and there's sort of nothing that's in this bucket yet?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Albrecht, we do not currently. Well, BMW, maybe?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Albrecht, in terms of floor area ratio, the BMW dealership would comply. It's a little bit over 0.6.
Okay.
It may not meet all the other standards, though.
Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Johnson, if I'm understanding this correctly, other than a minimum floor area ratio, which, there's nothing that stops a standard enclosed property from going to .6, correct? The only reason that I, it seems like we would have this other category is to allow some service doors to be visible. Is that kind of the gist of it?
Chair, Commissioner Roman, that and the 30 motor vehicle sales to be used for inventory for display outside.
But that's an option for the enclosed, correct?
It's not, you're not allowed to have any motor vehicles displayed as part of an enclosed facility. Only in a parking structure scenario it talks about, and that's only for storage and display.
Okay, I'm following it now. Thank you.
Yep.
Other Commission members? Yeah, I think there was some confusion on my part, too, about the six bays versus then this new definition. And so, just to make sure, Mr. Johnson, so I'm wondering if you can give maybe just a little more background, or Mr. Markergard, about the motor vehicle sales enclosed, because that one, that particular ordinance required them to be fully screened. And now, I understand, in this particular scenario, we're saying some doors are okay to be visible. Is there, I'm wondering about the, maybe more about the background to the original ordinance that went in with the enclosed motor vehicle sales. I don't know if we have a history on that.
Do you want me to address that, or do you want to?
I can address that. Mr. Chair, so that definition, I'm going to guess dates back probably five to 10 years, and was added, and then later modified. The Mall of America actually did a privately initiated code amendment to further modify it. Originally, it was exclusively, everything would be indoors, and there would be no service associated with that. So it would be very similar to typical retail use in that respect. You don't have outside storage of inventory, and then there was no auto repair. Couple of years back, the mall applied for and received approval to amend that category to allow some display outside of a structure, but within a parking ramp, and to allow limited service, but it was limited to six bays. They had a potential user at the time. It didn't pan out, but it was amended in that respect. And that particular definition did not meet the criteria this new applicant and user is looking for, so they are applying to, rather than further amend that definition, which we had some concerns about, they're applying for a brand-new definition, which, thinking about the future users, that would be a future application, not before us tonight. Staff, at least, was amenable to this solution.
Thank you, Mr. Markergard. I appreciate that brief history lesson on where we came from on this. Commission members, Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, one other observation I had is, you know, in your map that showed the areas of the city that would meet the zoning, I think it's, you know, many of those spaces are already auto-use. The one that stands out to me, though, is the South Town Center. And how would a permitted use at that area align or not align with either our comp plan vision for that area or other areas that we have reviewed? Because that would be a glaring, not something you'd want to be a permitted use there versus a conditional use.
Chair, Commissioner Roman, I'm glad you bring up the comp plan. Chair, Commissioner Roman, sorry for that. I'm glad you bring up the comp plan, just a point for the note of the public and for your consideration this evening. To be eligible for motor vehicle sales facility, you have to have the future land use designation of regional commercial... regional commercial, which has, you know, fairly limited application throughout the city. I can't remember if South Town does have that designation. Okay. What I could say is that certainly, as it pertains to the bus rapid transit that's happening on the east end of that development, I believe the eastern portion of that development is currently Zoned C-5. Is that correct? Glenn?
Yes. A corner of the site is actually, that shows up in white, kind of the corner.
So, I don't think you're wrong to raise that concern, and I would agree with you that that has the potential not to be, you know, the best use for that portion of, or that particular location. But yeah, you need both regional commercial and you need either C-1 or C-3 potential zoning. Given the purpose and intent statements, that's why we included it with C-3. The applicant, I should say, the applicant requested it as part of C-3, but that's kind of what the nature of our discussions have been.
So, thank you. As a permitted use, other than being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, but as a permitted use, could that be placed there?
It'd be my position that it could, if it met code. Yes?
Thank you.
Just clarification, Mr. Johnson. So, again, we're talking about C-1 and C-3, C-3 being the high-intensity retail. Is South Town C-3?
I'm gonna-
Or is it C-1?
Mr. Chair, it is C-3.
It is C-3. Sorry, taking some notes here, commissioners. And if you can, maybe, Mr. Johnson, are the other sites?
Oops.
How many of the other sites are C-3 that are, because we just saw it as one color, one uniform coating?
Yeah, no problem. I'm going to try and filter it. Chair, if you may, if I may, with on the fly. I counted them, the collection grouping, forgive me, I don't have the breakdown of it. So, you got the South Town sites. I believe home furniture is Zoned C-3. I know off the top of my head from a previous project I worked on with that. And then the motor vehicle sales used to the east there, or I should say REI. Yep.
That's C-3?
Yep. I think that's it, but let me double-check. Yeah, I think the other sites were C-1 sites. I'm sure this is riveting at television right now. I'm sorry.
But helpful, but helpful.
Yeah, I think the other sites were C-1. So, you're talking about South Town, home furniture, and the REI site currently. And the east, that east corner of South Town technically is C-5, near the transit area.
All right. Commission members, any further questions on this from staff at this point? All right, not seeing any. Mr. Johnson, you said the applicant is online tonight? Is that right? Who is that?
Go ahead.
Mr. Strom, Tom Strom is online.
All right. Mr. Strom, would you like to address the planning commission?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, Nick, for your review tonight and continued guidance with staff here. No real comment, just here to answer any questions or maybe.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Strom. Commission members, any questions for Mr. Strom? Not seeing any, Mr. Strom. Appreciate you being available for questions tonight. Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this item? Anybody in the chambers at this point? Not seeing any. Mr. Markergard, is there anybody online that would like to speak to this item?
It's Mr. Pease. Do we have anybody on the phone that would like to speak?
There's no one on the line. You can proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commission members, seeing nobody from the public in the chambers that would like to speak to this item, nor anybody online, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Cookton?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. All right. Commission members, we now have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on that item? All right. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Commission members, discussion. I'll start. I'm a little worried here on this particular privately-initiated code amendment. When we talk about C-3, specifically South Town, we've put a lot of effort into South Town very specifically for a walkable community-type environment. And I'm sorry, but no matter how dense the development for this type of use, I don't believe it fits. And what we're understanding here tonight is that that would be a permitted use. Additionally, we did just have a presentation, and as a city, sent a letter to the Met Council to say we would continue working with the Met Council Metro Transit to develop a transit-friendly corridor on American Boulevard. I think adding an additional use that potentially affects some of our prime real estate, where we would be looking for buses, especially since the Orange Line stations are already there, would not be a good decision on the city's part. Therefore, I can't support the motion in front of us. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's, you know, my notes on my docket when I was reviewing, and that's where I drew a big yellow circle. And it's, again, this is not a reflection on any specific developer previous or in the future, but we, when we met, was it last week, two weeks ago? We met two weeks ago, we had a situation where we had a application that met the standard, as far as what they could do with a piece of land based on zoning and based on other code issues. And we had, you know, we found it inconsistent with our comp plan for that area. But what I'm hearing from the staff is that that would not necessarily apply, and this because it's a permitted use. So, maybe the answer is C-3 is wrong? Maybe the answer is conditional? But, you know, whether that, I also look here, and certainly we haven't gone into all of our motor vehicle sales uses, because again, we all like access to motor vehicle sales. They're, they bring people to the community. They're necessary. I'm not at all opposed to motor vehicle sales. The question is where. And if I look at even the line above with motor vehicle sales enclosed, that's a permitted use there as well. So, again, maybe our issue is that specific area is, should be zoned differently. I don't know. And again, I know that we discontinued an item, so I don't want to do anything that's going to muck up or be inconsistent for someone who's working on a project. But it's the situation we found ourselves in a couple of weeks ago, where our vision for the area as a city is inconsistent sometimes with what property owners are entitled to do based on code. And so, like you, Mr. Chair, I think, given the specifics that we have in front of us and the specific tension we've had, I would also not be supportive at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Any further, Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Question for Mr. Johnson. I'm trying to think how I want to phrase this. Let me start with this. Is South Town included in the Penn American Development District?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so, if this came before us as a real application at South Town, and to be clear, I don't know if that's what they're doing, but if that were the case, would we have to make a required finding in that the proposed use is in conformance with the comprehensive plan?
Chair Commissioner Cookton, you would.
So-
The Penn American District Plan.
So, it would be my opinion, Commissioner Roman and others, that that's very similar to what we dealt with two weeks ago. And we were able to recommend denial of that particular application because we couldn't meet or couldn't find required finding number one, that it was not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And so, if we play this out, we approve this privately-initiated code amendment tonight, I think we would still have the authority to reject that use at South Town Center, because we could be unable to make required finding number one.
Thank you, Commissioner Cookton. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If that is the case, then maybe I misunderstood my question earlier, because the question earlier, what I heard may not have been what was intended. What I heard was that that would be allowed and permitted carte blanche, if you will, versus what Commissioner Cookton asked, which is similar to our previous thing. That gives me a little bit more comfort than perhaps what I understood earlier. So, if there's anything to be clarified, I'm-
Yeah, I think we need some clarification on that, because I heard the same thing as Commissioner Roman. So, just for the record, if there were something that came in to any one of these, well, specifically Penn America, what were the findings that would be required?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roman, one important consideration is with a permitted use, if you have a building that exists today, and another use is coming into that building that's permitted, there's no review before the planning commissioner council. It's just allowed, you know, tenants change all the time within, you know, multi-tenant sites. If there is a new building proposed, then that would come before you as a final site and building plan or a plan development potentially. So, a new building would come before you, but just reuse of a existing building would not.
Yeah. And I, Chair, if I may, I'm trying to locate the required findings for final site and building plans. You'll see this language also reflected in, for preliminary and final development plans as well. So, thank you, Commissioner Cookton, for raising that important point. I must have a case of pandemic brain, or I don't know what's going on. But the comp plan is obviously more comprehensive and encompassing than just its future land use designation, which is the regional commercial. Like you said, there are also district plans and the required findings for final site, whether it be final site and building plans or final development plans. They both have a required finding pertaining to the adopted district plan for the area. So, he's correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and you're allowed.
Yep.
Yeah, you're allowed. All right. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. My question is really around how the city arrived at the permitted versus conditional use within these districts. And is it merely because it's permitted at a less-density revision today, and this would be more dense, and we just kind of took the permitted and moved on? Or did we think about conditional and using that as our litmus test to make sure that we're getting what we envision the city development to be?
Yeah. Chair Commissioner Goldsman, if I get a little latitude here, to kind of talk in more globally, when it pertains to zoning and kind of approach, I think the previous approach to zoning, kind of an earlier era, was to make a lot of uses conditional, and then they would put whatever conditions they wanted to put on it at the approval. And it became much more discretionary or, you know, kind of a moving target, a little bit depending on the type of development, who the user was, et cetera, et cetera. Kind of more modern approach to zoning is to do away with as many conditional uses and create performance standards. So, you wouldn't find this use being recommended as a permitted use if they didn't have already within the code designated performance standards for these types of facilities. I don't know about prior to the '06 and 1999 code revisions, but my guess is that motor vehicle sales used to be a conditional use. That'd be my guess. Glenn, to your recollection?
That's correct. They did used to be.
And so, now that you've, and this is an assortment of different uses you'll see in our code. Restaurants used to be a conditional use, and then we developed restaurant standards. So, that's kind of a more modern versus, and I think it's in order to take discretion out of the process to treat all property owners and different users and sites kind of fairly and equally, in a way, subject to the same standards.
Thanks for the clarification, the reminder about restaurants. I remember going through that. So, it helps me frame the application.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just for the record, all of motor vehicle sales and all the other, all the other types of motor vehicle sales currently are either permitted, or they're not allowed currently. So, it's just, it's following that same pattern.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Chair and Mr. Johnson. Just for clarification to what you brought up earlier in addressing Mr. Cookton's question about the comprehensive plan and the language, you brought up a zoning language. If the language as-is is adopted today with the C-3 permitted, and a new developer, a new applicant were to go in into that region that we're just talking about right now, and a permit is being reviewed by staff, you would make sure that the standards that were mentioned, that you brought up earlier, are being met, and there's no conflict, provided that, we just talked about right now, that what we know so far of that area of the adopted land use plans would not be consistent with, you know, requiring us seeing more walkability and, you know, all that, and more transit friendliness, and some of the things that would be brought by what was just mentioned by Commissioner Roman. To me, that's already in conflict just by how the use operates or what the characteristics the use brings and the characteristics we want to see of the built environment and the uses in the area, would not already just cancel each other out and therefore not be approved at a permit level? And if that's the case, then couldn't we just recommend a, instead of a permitted C-3, be a conditional C-3? Or, I'm trying to just visualize, you know, what would be the point of having a permitted C-3 now when you're reviewing the permit later on? It just would not work for that area? But technically, you can leave it as-is right now, because any applicant can come in and request a rezoning for a different site that does not have additional restrictions in an area, where comp plan does not have, you know, things that are spelled out like the Penn Area Plan. I guess I'm comfortable with as-is proposals, what I'm trying to get at, considering that any applicant can come in and want to rezone to different parts of the city to additional C-3. That would be less in conflict with the comprehensive plan and allow the use to happen in the city. But also, even though it's permitted in the south area, the mall area that you're just describing right now, it could easily be, the permit could not be approved. I don't know what I'm trying to get at here, but I'm trying to figure out what your process would be for administrative review, because we're not going to see the applications based on what you just said right now. So, by leaving it as permitted, I'm trying to connect the dots. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
That's okay.
What would that look like if the use and the comprehensive plan for that area are not on the same page? Would that mean that the permit would not go through, for example?
Yeah. Chair Commissioner Abdi, I don't want to say never, but just the nuts and bolts of how you would construct one of these facilities, I don't think it would be renovating an existing building. That's just, you know, I'd be curious what Glenn thinks about that, or if we had some of our engineers here, but just structurally, what you would need to have a multi-level motor vehicle sales facility. I don't think you're retrofitting a building to do that from scratch. Maybe Commissioner Cookton, as a structural engineer, can weigh in on that. But what I'm getting at is that the likelihood of there being only an administrative review for this type of use is very low, in my professional opinion. So, I think whatever's coming to you is going to be coming to you in the form of not only potentially rezoning, regiding, possibly, but say it wasn't the case, say they found an existing site that met those two criteria, then you would be having to meet the final site and building or final development plans of being consistent with the comp plan, which includes our district plans, like the Penn American District Plan. So, I think that gets to one aspect of your question. Just by way of process, you know, United Properties has submitted a zoning text amendment. They've submitted an application. Our legal division is not super excited about changing an application. If you are not supportive of the application, unless, you know, certainly there's friendly amendments, or that's certainly an old way of doing business, but if you are not supportive of what's been before you this evening, I would not recommend approval and note the reasons why. It would be up to the applicant to work with staff at that point to try and figure out an alternative path that meets their end goals. an alternative path that meets their end goals. But it's kind of commonly referred to as half approval, half denial, or what do we call it? Maybe I'm getting too far...
I think we're familiar with those.
Yeah, we're getting, I'm getting too far into the weeds right now, but hopefully that answers your question to the degree that, what you were kind of looking for.
Thank you. It does, yeah.
Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would circle back, having originally had a strong opinion and still having a strong opinion, but understanding more about this, whether it was an administrative approval, which to your point, I think it's, I agree it's unlikely, or it came to a planning commission, the fact that the finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan or district plans, that solves this for me, because I think in this case, clearly it doesn't. I mean, you know, the story of the restaurant with the double drive-through lane next to the bus stop, permitted use? Yep. Consistent with the plan? Nope. So having earlier said I was not supportive, I can be supportive of this, given the ability to make a finding in certain areas based on those plans.
Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And I want to go back just a little bit more to that required finding of consistent with the comprehensive plan. We are talking about two different development districts here. So this application we referenced from a couple of weeks ago was the Lyndale Avenue Retrofip Plan, which was very clear in its language about walkability, vehicles close to the street, interior parking, street activation, all those things. I'm a little shorter in the tooth and I'm not familiar with the exact language of the Penn American District Plan. And maybe I can lean on Mr. Johnson. Do you, can you, is it the same theme in that plan? Is it, I know you can't answer this, but is it as well spelled out as it is in the Lyndale Avenue Retrofip about walkability, street activation?
Absolutely. Yes, unequivocally, it is. I mean, the, yeah, Chair Commissioner Cookton, the development that that district promotes is the development that has occurred in that district since its inception with Genesee and Fresh Time and the apartments and minimal site setbacks, pedestrian scale roadways and type development. So yes, unequivocally.
Well, with that, then I can support this application. I think we've got enough, because it's always about how much leverage do we have, right? Do we have enough teeth when this comes before us? And I think we do have the proper teeth in this. And we can support this because it's not just South Town, right? There's other places. And so, you know, we don't know where they want to put this. I don't know where they want to put this. And so I'm open to it. I think we've got enough teeth to prevent it from places we don't want it, but we're allowing it to go places that are other than that one. So I'm in favor.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cookton. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think when I think about this language, I mean, it's more density. We've talked about we want density and density is kind of the focus in making more walkable. So part of this is really, you know, we're improving the density of our current situation. So I like that aspect of this. The sticking point for me is the C3 district. And so part of me wants to approve this for C1 and C1 only. And I don't know if that's a possibility, but taking C3 out as, because of the concerns that we have and just focusing on C1 opens up more density in the C1 districts where most likely there are, you know, quite a few different properties in that area. I think there's only three in the C3. So part of me wants to say, we approve, we move forward, but only for C1. Is that a possibility?
I'll just maybe chime in. I know the staff was talking here and just to take from Mr. Johnson, if, you know, either we agree or don't agree, I think otherwise, maybe at this point, we could ask the applicant their thoughts on C3, C1. That's another option that we could start to move down. But I think in this case, you know, we do have a request in front of us. We can ask the applicant. If the applicant is pretty strong in their feelings, then I think we really only have the two choices in front of us.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Chair Solberg, so one of the considerations, and again, I'm trying to keep us out of like the weeds and the staff discussions and how we evaluate all this stuff, but you guys are a nitty-gritty group, so let's get into it. Part of the wisdom of allowing it in multiple zoning districts is that should one of these uses come forward and, say they find a site and C3 makes sense to them, or say if it's only allowed in C1, rather, they bring a project to you, it rezones, it reguides the property, the project never moves forward, and now you have a site that is now C1. You now have the ability to construct a typical Class 1 motor vehicle sales facility there. So one thing I would ask you to consider is that by allowing it in multiple districts, you have the opportunity, say on a site where a Class 1 motor vehicle sales facility would not be an appropriate use, you have another menu of a zoning district to choose from, which ultimately, should that project never move forward, you're not rezoning it to a district that now they can construct a typical motor vehicle sales use. So that's part of, I don't know if it's wisdom or whatever the case may be, but that's part of the strategy or thinking, which is informing this, submitted by the applicant, of course.
Always wisdom when it comes from staff, Mr. Johnson, always wisdom. All right, Commissioner members, I'll just say, Mr. Johnson's, that's a very good point. I think, I struggle a little bit with this, only because I think more or less, as we talk about American Boulevard, and we've had these discussions over the past years about big storage facilities, yeah, I recognize 494 as a major draw, but if we are serious about kind of making 494 a viable transit facility, you don't put big lots with not very much use for your average ordinary user, but for somebody that's there for a car, that's it. You don't ride a bus to go get a car normally, I don't think. But Mr. Johnson's wisdom is, it makes sense in this, but I just don't know, I don't, I'm not sure that enclosed or high density is appropriate in C3 at all. And it's hard for me to say, let's add another thing to C3, when I don't agree with the first thing that's in C3. So from that standpoint, it isn't, I agree, Mr. Commissioner Roman, about where we originally started about allowing it in, or South Town, there's a lot of reasons it wouldn't potentially go there. That was one of my initial concerns, but as I mentioned at the outset, as we talk about developing density and users for future transit, I'm not sure that this matches that goal. So I'll leave that with my comments. I think at this point, I would still have to vote no on this. But Commissioner members, if there's additional thoughts?
Yep. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have a question. So, Mr. Johnson, was there any discussion about changing the motor vehicle sales enclosed to allow for this more high-density use there, rather than creating a whole new zoning definition?
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Albrecht, we did, we did look at that. The problem with that approach or the flaw, fatal flaw of that to staff's perspective is that enclosed is allowed in a lot more zoning districts than we feel this use should be narrowly allowed within. And so, I mean, I can look up the list if you like, but it's allowed in a lot more districts than we think appropriate. And if you get back, you know, I've provided my analysis and I don't want to push too hard, but if you're thinking about the 11 sites that this would become applicable to, three of them are C3, the remainder are C1, all of the sites that are C1 are existing motor vehicle sales uses, you're certainly right to look to the future that that could change in the future. But as of right now, we're getting calls and contacts about trying to establish that use elsewhere in the city, which we are giving a stiff arm to, for lack of a better term. So those sites are valuable as their existing use, if that makes sense. And they are located along American Boulevard. Could they redevelop at some point in the future? Certainly. But I don't see that happening in the near term, in the long term, potentially. So then what you're really talking about is three sites. You're talking about home furniture, REI, two very high-end, just reinvested or reconstructed or recently in the modern era constructed retail uses, and then South Town, which is subject to the Penn American District Plan, as Commissioner Cookton talked about. So that's my perspective on it. I don't think Commissioner Solberg's wrong either, though, about, you know, what Metro Transit and what the city's future vision for American may or may not be. I don't think that's wrong thought process either, but I just want to provide that background of what we're talking about. We're talking about 11 sites with the potential for future discretion on rezoning, regiding, should they not be looking at one of those sites? But yes, we did, that was a long answer, I'm sorry. We did look at enclosed and it's allowed in too many districts to garner our support.
No, and thank you, Mr. Johnson. We got it on the backside of the handout you provided us as well.
Oh, sure.
I'm sure that's quite a bit more than 11 sites. Yes, Commissioner Albrecht?
So what I, if I, if I take the Penn and American site and I think about this high-density use on that site, obviously there's a little comprehensive plan issue with that. But I also, I'm not totally against motor vehicle sales at Penn and American. But I would lean more towards, not everything in the motor vehicle sales enclosed, but the fact that vehicles, 30 motor vehicles are stored within a parking structure seems to be, I don't know, more appealing than 30 vehicles just out, displayed outdoors. It seems to be a tighter density that way. You know, obviously the vehicle repair and the six service bays, I probably have a problem with that part. But I, that is to say that I guess I would be in support of moving forward with this, given that specifically at Penn and American, but also at some other three, C3 sites, that it would not be in keeping with the comprehensive plan. And, but then again, I go back to, well then, why aren't we doing it in the first place? So I, I'm talking myself out of it, obviously. I, yeah, that's all I'll say for now.
I think this is one, it's interesting, right? There's benefits, there's pros and cons on this particular one. And I guess you just have to figure out which one you're valuing more or what you think the implications are going to be later on down the road. So other commissioners with thoughts? I'm going to stare you down. Otherwise, if there's no additional thoughts or questions, certainly entertain a motion. This is kind of a head-scratcher, so. Or is there more information that you desire to be able to make the decision? And then I suppose we could ask staff what the timeline is on this particular application and when a city decision has to be made.
Yeah, Chair Solberg, the deadline has already been extended to the 120-day, out to January 7th. So that's your action deadline of when the city council would have to take action on this application. As always, I, you know, welcome the applicant's perspective on that, if you're willing, but that's our agency action deadline, is January 7th.
Okay, and currently...
Unless otherwise extended by the applicant.
And currently, that is city council public hearing on the 29th. Would that be the final action on November 29th?
If you, if you took action tonight. Yep.
Okay, otherwise that goes...
If you made a recommendation this evening.
Would that be, would that, if, just for instance, again, if we continued it to a date certain, I'm assuming, just depending upon how long we would need, would depend upon the next city council public hearing date then, right? I mean, if we continued for two weeks to, if we needed more information, I'm just trying to go through the options for commission members. If we needed some piece of information that wasn't available for us yet tonight to make a good decision, say two weeks, would we still make that? Or are we going to start pushing into holidays and maybe potentially canceled city council meetings?
Yeah, Chair Solberg, I believe Glenn's looking at the meetings, but I would guess that you would have enough time to do that. I believe, you know, there's, I believe there's a second city council meeting prior to the holidays, but let's pull that up, I guess.
Sure. And so, commission members, just purely, if you need more information, we'd have to direct staff what that information is that we're looking for prior to making a decision. So Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, whether you may know, or I see Mr. Strom is still on the line, the C1 and C3 inclusion, was that applicants' desire to have those two, or is that staff's best recommendation that those be the included districts?
I would, Chair, Commissioner Roman, I would say that the applicant sought our feedback and presented those districts, and we were supportive of those districts. And not supportive of other districts.
Sure. And I don't know, point of order, would it be appropriate to ask the applicant if C1 only would be detrimental to their process or their plans?
Mr. Markard, I think we can ask the applicant?
Mr. Chair, you can ask the applicant. I would say that the focus of our conversations has been on C3. And remember that it would not necessarily need to be a site that's currently zoned C3. It could be a site that's rezoned...
Reszoned.
...to C3. The C1 was added at staff request just because since, you know, standard motor vehicle sales is allowed, we thought it would also be appropriate to allow this use.
Sure.
But yeah, definitely you can ask the applicant.
Okay. Do you wish that?
No, I'm okay, given what you've said and, you know, it's the, we had this conversation, I think, when, something similar, when the Acura Subaru project came and they had purchased the vacant body shop and now it is surface parking along American Boulevard for automobiles. And so, again, the idea, I get the idea of being careful about what we say is permitted, but I think of anything that we would want to put along this corridor, when you think about density, it's probably better than the Class 1. You know, and I think of actually a number of years when I had a less reliable vehicle where I would drop it off at another unnamed dealer on the other side of 494 and take the bus to work. So, you know, bus and a car dealer isn't always incompatible, but...
Good point.
I'm pretty comfortable with this at this point, I think, given how few, I mean, again, nothing is certain, but I'm just armchair quarterbacking this. South Town would require a pretty, very specific, for me, would require a very specific spot of that parcel in order to be compliant. Home just built a year ago.
Right.
And REI, near as I can tell, is probably not a candidate for demolition. So it seems like anything that would be C3 would be new C3.
Okay. Good point. And with any rezoning, we have additional authority on our side to recommend approval or denial, so.
Chair Solberg, there's no decision that the planning commission and council makes that you have more discretion on than regiding and rezoning, for the record.
All right. Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And to back up Commissioner Roman's point, as a single one-car owner, when I drop my car off for service, it's actually almost required that I have public transit available to me so I can get back home. So it is actually kind of nice.
Commissioner Abdi?
I can move forward with a recommendation.
All right. If there's no further discussion by commission members, go ahead, Commissioner Abdi.
All right. In case PL 2021-192, I move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance establishing and defining motor vehicle sales high-density as a new use designation and making it a permitted use in the C1 and C3 zoning districts, thereby amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Abdi. All right, commission members, we have a motion in front of us to recommend approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Corman? All right, commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance establishing and defining motor vehicle sales high-density as a new use designation and making it a permitted use in the C1 and C3 zoning districts, thereby amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code. Is there any further discussion on this item? Not seeing any? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, aye. Motion passes.
Motion passes, that will move forward to the November 29th City Council Meeting as a public hearing. All right. All right, commission members, at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion for recess, so that we can set up and join our partners from the HRA for the next two items in front of us. So, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All right, and we have a motion for recess, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second, all those in favor say aye. We'll recess until, I'll just make this clear, 7:15. All right, recess until 7:15, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in recess till 7:15.
The October 28th, 2021 meeting of the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting, and we are meeting concurrently with the Planning Commission. I will now call the roll, do the roll call. Present.
Lewis?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Let the record show that there are four commissioners here for the HRA Commission.
All right, thank you. And I also just make sure folks at home know that we are reconvening the October 28th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, for those that just witnessed our first recess, I think, in six years that I'm aware of. So, with that, Chair Lewis, do you have anything else?
Not at this time.
Procedurally? Okay. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and call Mr. Palermo to present the item number four for us on the Planning Commission, single-family, two-family dwelling standards.
Thank you, Chair Solberg. Thank you, Chair Lewis. I'll just share my screen. So, today, we're here to talk about single and two-family home performance standards, and I also include here accessory dwelling rooms, we'll squeeze in the middle, Sean James will present that item. So, some of the background for why we're doing this project, why it's on our 2021, and it will continue into 2022 work plan, we're looking to encourage more housing options within the city, where community of choice provide those choices. Through this update, we can potentially address some affordability and homeownership, we can address racial equity and potentially discriminatory policies that might be in place, and we can encourage health and sustainable communities, and we'll discuss a little bit more about that. What did I press? I just wanted to start out with this quote here, it kind of jumped out at me, and I think it's kind of important to frame our discussion, this, I think I got this from the New York Times, but, "We are in a weird time demographically," said Thomas Jimenez, a sociologist at Stanford. "There's more choice about our individual identities and how we present them than there ever has been. We presume far less about who somebody is based on the boxes they check compared to previous periods." I think that's important, as we think about moving forward, it's more, it's less about the boxes and more about creating flexibility and more options, and to frame our discussion. Whereas in the past, it was very much cookie cutter, right? So part of that is looking at just how we shifted in the past 40, 50 years. Our current, our current code really kind of dates back to the 70s. We had a really big boom in the 50s and 60s, and then the 70s kind of slowed a little bit, and that's where our standards really, we've kind of done incremental changes rather than big changes in the last 40 or so years. And in that time, we were 99% white in the 70s, now we're 68% white, non-Hispanic. Household size was 3.7 people, now we're close to 2.3, and as we noticed, we're now kind of flatlining on that household size and maybe a slight uptick. What we found in the 2020 census is we're both getting, for recent years, we're growing both older and younger. We have under 18 population growing a little bit, and our older population, of course, growing. So what are some issues that we'll attempt to counteract? First issue is land scarcity. There's very little land in the city to develop. Our comprehensive plan, I think, identified 275 acres, we've had some of that already developed since the comp plan's been in place. So you're looking at redevelop, options for redevelopment, and our current standards sometimes make it more difficult or present barriers. And just to give you an idea of where our vacant land is, it's not in single-family home just area zone for single, single-family home districts. You can see it's south looped, it's along the freeway, and then little pockets here and there, but by and large, redevelopment is where we see potential for more single and two-family homes. So when we think about affordability, why do we have, part of why we have this affordability problem, besides land scarcity, obviously, is part of it, we just haven't had enough home production in general. From 2008, you can see this chart here, our home production starts going down and down and bottoms around 2010, and this is our household growth annually. So, on a whole, household growth is declining slightly, but we're still getting 30,000 or 20,000 new households in the region per year, so this is the metro region. So, we were underperforming, so we're already at a deficit, we need to catch up to create more homes, we need to actually create more than what's in demand, because we need to make up for that lost production. So, we're here, we're still not caught up yet. So finding ways to create just more housing in general is important. Other aspects of affordability are kind of hard costs, you look at the cost of land, smaller lots, obviously, the more lots you have, the land prices change. Building design, the materials you use, the size of buildings, the, how much pavement you need, all those are kind of hard costs that built into the home, and those are things that we can have a little more influence on in the zoning code. There's other costs, such as mortgages or closing costs, that we just, you know, we don't affect with the zoning code, but those also impact affordability. I also wanted to bring up the ownership gap in Bloomington. So this is from the American Community Survey from last year. Ownership gap for our Black Indigenous people of color population is 35% of the households are homeowners, compared to 75% for white, non-Hispanic. So that, that is significant. We'll get more in another study session about equity, we'll talk, I've kind of come up with four topic areas for us to discuss some potential updates. So the topic areas are affordability, operational efficiency, and I'll get into a little bit more about what that means, but where can we be more clear about what our code is trying to get at? And then, like I said, equity, we'll talk more in detail in another study session, and we'll talk about health and environment as well. And I think it's important that these topics are all interrelated. We might find opportunity for more efficiency, but will create more issues with affordability, or, you know, if we find more health, sustainable building design, that might increase cost, right? So I kind of think of it as a balloon, you press on one area, you might bulge out in another area. So that's something, you know, there's a balance to this, as we discuss. So a little primer on single-family, it's predominantly in our R1 zoning district, we have two other zoning districts, our, our A1, our S1.
One A.
Yeah. I very rarely deal with them, they're pretty rare within the city, it's predominantly our R1 zoning district. Those are predominantly guided low-density, in some instances, it is medium-density, but it's mostly guided low-density in our comprehensive plan, which means it has a maximum of five units per acre. Most of the codes are in our Chapter 21, in our general standards, we kind of break our standards down, and as we talked in our previous discussion on the item, we have performance standards. But for single-family homes, we don't have a whole lot of performance standards, it's just relayed to pools and sports courts, whereas two-family homes, we do get into some more details. And those performance standards really kind of differentiate with the two-family home. You can see here, our minimum lot size for a single-family home is 11,000 square feet, whereas a two-family is 15,000 square feet. And you can see 15,000 for a single-family on a corner, and 18,000 for a two-family on the corner. We have different median lot lists for two-family, it's 100 feet versus 80 feet, our setback is 50 feet versus 30 feet, and our minimum floor area is slightly smaller for a two-family home as well. So, as we get into the discussion topics a little bit more detail, I want to have three kind of guiding questions that will kind of help our discussion today. The first will be, should staff move forward with this item, this topic? A simple yes or no is what we're looking for, should we spend more time to kind of get more detailed code recommendation? We won't get too much into the detail today, it's more just, is it a yes, is it a high, medium, or low priority, as we recognize that this could be a very big update, or depending, you know, if we need to prioritize staff time? And then any initial feedback you might have on the different potential changes. So to give you a little context on the first topic, which is affordability, just wanted to show you where we've changed over time. Our median home value kind of dips, kind of similar after 2008, and then it starts to rebound a little bit and keeps increasing, from about 2014 on its increase. So our median home value is close to 330,000. And this chart here on the right shows just the age of our housing stock, when we're thinking redevelopment, or additions, or modernization of homes. You can see nearly 50% of our homes were built before 1960, another 25% in the 1960s, so the significant are over 50 years old. This kind of just shows in a chart, a little bit easier to see that trend of median home value over time. And then, we're part of a greater market, right? So how do we compare to other cities in the region? You look at our median home value, and these are a little bit dated now, and they're from the American Community Survey, which is a little bit different than other resources, but we're, we tend to be in that middle range. Our, this shows our median home value at 250, which is a little bit different than what we've seen in the last year, we've seen some big jumps, right? But you can kind of assume that most of other communities have seen that jump as well. But just beyond just the total home value, look at our price per square footage, that really shows you your value, because you have different-sized housing. So we're right in that middle, about $169 per square feet, which is about the average of these 17 comparison cities. And similar with our, our per sales, it's a little bit lower, about 300,000 versus about 340 for the average for the cities. So, these are kind of, staff had convened interdepartmental group to kind of discuss ways to adjust these topics. We did some facilitated discussion, and these are kind of the items that shuffled to the top in the code, that we can potentially address some of these issues with. So I'll kind of go through these topic areas, what the current standard is, and that's where I'll look for your input on, is this something to continue to pursue and get more detailed recommendation for you? Is it a high, medium, or low priority? And any first initial reactions? And this first item, minimum lot size, is probably the big kahuna that we were really looking at. It's the big item that we've been discussing. So currently, our minimum lot size is about 11,000, is 11,000 square feet, and 15,000 for corner lots, a little bit more for two-family homes. So how do we compare to some other communities? Richfield can go down to 6,700 square feet in some of their zoning districts, so that's almost half of what we require. Burnsville is similar with 10,000 square feet, St. Louis Park's about 9,000, Edina's 9,000, but they also have a median lot area for the neighborhood, so it's really hard to see. So it's really hard to say what it actually is in practice. Minnetonka is the largest at twenty-two thousand square feet, but they have a few other zoning districts as well where they allow single-family. So R2 and R3. Eagan, similar approach too, has an R1, an R1S, and an R2. And Eden Prairie has several zoning districts as well. Um, most of the homes are in the R1 thirteen or R1 nine point five, which is nine thousand five hundred square feet. So what does that actually look like? It's hard to say these numbers and it's another to kind of, so I'm trying to give you a visual representation of what a ten thousand square foot lot might actually be, which is pretty similar to our eleven thousand square foot lot. In fact, this is in Bloomington, one of our neighborhoods. Um, it shows you what ten thousand square feet is. So this is less than our current standard. And about fifteen percent of our lots are lower than our current standard. So we have a significant amount of lots that are legally non-conforming. This is what eight thousand square feet, uh, looks like for a lot. This is, I believe, in Richfield. And that equates to about five point five units per acre, which is higher than our low-density guiding. So this wouldn't currently be permitted with, in our low-density guiding. Even smaller at seven thousand square feet, believe this is Richfield again. Pretty typical suburban layout still though. You don't see a huge difference between ten thousand and seven thousand, in my opinion. And then this is what, forty-five hundred square feet. This is in Eden Prairie. These are, this is equates, this two block area is about seven point five units per acre. So as you can see, design can really impact what that feel is in a neighborhood. This is pretty dense, we would consider this medium density in our, in our guide plan. And then we do have instances of mobile home park. This is closer, almost a high-density designation for us, attending units per acre. Uh, this is a five-acre site, which for a mobile, mobile home is the minimum. But I just wanted to throw it in the context of what we're thinking of detached housing. This is what currently is permitted in our code. And then this just explains that the, the more density you have, the smaller lots you have, the more affordability you can bake in because you're spreading that cost over more units on the same amount of land. So, uh, Brookings has done a lot of research and showing that what they call gentle density. So not an overwhelmingly, you know, going from low density to high density, but a modest increase can still have impact on affordability. So some pros and cons of our standards. It, I purposely did not call them pro or con, I just listed them so you can decide if they're pros or cons. Um, but, you know, it does, that larger lot size does ensure that our standards can be achieved. You know, we have parking requirements, setback requirements, impervious surface. All that can be achieved within eleven thousand square foot lot. If you get smaller, you, you might end up having unintended consequences. About, like I had mentioned a couple times, seventeen percent of our existing lots are under the eleven thousand square feet. Only about two percent are below nine thousand square feet. Um, so that gives you kind of an idea. We don't have a lot of really tiny lots that are non-conforming, it's, it's pretty close. But when we're thinking redevelopment, there's, um, I think that number is, there's, that number is wrong. It's not seventy-two percent of lots are larger than twenty. Um, I believe it was twelve percent of lots, I have it somewhere. But when we're thinking, if I have one lot, it's easier to split than trying to get two or three lots and try and combine and, you know, multiple owners. So when we're looking at twenty-two, it's two, seven percent of our lots are over twenty-two thousand. So if you're thinking of our minimum lot size right now, you saw an example today in your first item, splitting a lot, meeting that minimum lot size of eleven thousand square feet only should be, two percent of our lots meet that standard to make that easy split. And then if you're looking at a two-family, you do have this minimum of fifteen thousand square feet, but that's inconsistent with our, our low-density guide plan as that would put you above our five units per acre. So you actually have to go a little bit more than fifteen thousand square feet not to be in conflict with our comp plan. So some of the approaches are reduce the lot size. Maybe there's flexibility that could be achieved with an overlay district. And potentially, we might need a comp plan amendment if we're thinking a higher density. Um, so I guess this leads us to our first item. Is this something that Planning Commission and HRA Commission are interested in and kind of open for any brief discussion?
Using an open discussion format?
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So this is Joanna Goldsman from the Planning Commission. One of the things that we've seen for two, two-family housing is that there was a requirement by the city to only have one two-family home within a five hundred foot radius as the crow flies.
Yes.
Would that also be an item that would be?
That is later in the presentation, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you. Yes, John.
Uh, thank you, John Olson, HRA. Um, I think given the, the history that you gave of going back to the seventies and what's happened since, really begs the question that we need to be looking at the situations that are impacted because of those changes. And, and so my general thought is, to answer that question, is that I think, yes. We need to dig into this more and appreciate the work that's already gone into this. It's pretty comprehensive already.
Cheryl Lewis, I am Chair of the HRA Commission. And I would echo Commissioner Olson's comments. I do believe that this is an area we should look into more seriously and more deeply because it could offer some solutions that we're looking for right now for more affordable housing.
Uh, Mr. Palermo, you mentioned seven point two percent of lots are greater than twenty-two thousand square feet. Can you give me a couple more, like, what's the percent over, uh, twenty thousand square feet?
Um, that would add another two point four percent, so you'd be about ten percent.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm a little hung up on, you know, how much is this going to really materialize into new development? A, a, a house today is not going to be shifted to one side of the lot. So if I have a lot that's twenty-one thousand square foot or twenty-three thousand square feet and I want to divide it into two, I also have to tear down my house and build two new ones. And then if you're going to build new houses, they're probably going to be pretty nice ones. And so you're losing the affordability piece again. And so I, you know, on paper, I certainly appreciate the intent of what we're trying to do here and I agree in, in select cases. I think we could achieve some affordability, but I'm, I'm struggling with the applicability of this actually happening.
Yeah, and that is true. That is, a big part of it is the design of lots. You're tearing down a house, which adds twenty thousand dollars to your cost at minimum, twenty to forty thousand. Um, one aspect though is increasing supply. You know, we're gaining a tighter, tighter housing market, correct? And as we just increase in supply in general, we see movement. So we might have a new house that's not affordable, but someone's moving out of or looking to move into that new house from a more affordable house. So there, there is a dynamic there, it's not a straight line. And that, that is the difficulty with this. It's not a, a single option that's going to make an impact, but having that flexibility for developers to have that option would provide some aspects.
Being that it is, excuse me, being that it's not a straight line, um, I don't want to pour cold water on things, but to me, this would seem like perhaps less of a priority than some of the other things that may have a straighter line to affordability.
Uh, a good point. I think what I'd like, uh, suggest that staff do is look at, uh, the age of buildings. I mean, uh, the way the city developed is mainly initially in the, in the eastern part of the city. And so it might be that there are, um, we could do some kind of inventory of buildings that are, uh, uh, expensive to maintain, uh, not efficient in terms of insulation and things like that and just, uh, getting old. And, uh, and so it might be that, that your point is well taken, I think, uh, as a general, generalization, but there might be some portions and perhaps mainly in the east part of the city or other parts that were developed west, but are older.
Yep, and we can dig deeper into that.
Commissioner Abdi, I think you had something?
Uh, thank you, I, uh, Swat Abdi, uh, Planning Commission. Um, I guess I had like multiple thoughts going, but as, one thing, I, I'm in support of actually looking into this because neighboring cities, a lot of folks are wanting to move out into the suburb areas, but there is less space for them to move into. Um, unlike Minneapolis, for example, where I have a li, a little bit more expertise. Um, you know, they have smaller lots, you see more density. Um, you know, in the case of the numbers that you're bringing up earlier were like eleven hundred, fifteen hundred. I guess what I'm worried about is if we're looking at a specific square footage for some of these lots that are zone R1, um, what is the concentration of that? Are those in, um, I don't want to say poor areas of Bloomington, um, but if we have super large lots in Bloomington that are like in the Bush Lake area or Normandale Lake area, those are not going to be affected, that their lots are likely not going to be recommended for splits. Um, so I guess what I, I'm definitely for it. I want to see more families moving into Bloomington. I want to see more housing options for folks. If I have a larger lot, if I'm able to split it and keep my single-family house and get a variance and reduce the setback because of where the new line will be. I think there's opportunities to preserve existing properties with setbacks. But my only concern would be, are we creating a concentration of, um, small lots? Um, and you know, what does that look like for, are we intentionally doing something that would be detrimental to our community?
Yep.
Good point. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Paige Roman, Planning Commission. Um, yes, I'm in support of staff spending time in this. I would put it in the medium category from a, uh, priority, at least from the things that I'm aware of that we've been talking about. Thought, the thoughts that I have on this about, you know, whether you look at the reducing the lot size, which I think is fine to reduce the minimum. I mean, you, you can have a fairly good-sized yard with a decent, again, a lot of Bloomington houses, especially anything, I mean, not exclusively, but most anything east of Normandale Boulevard is, is mostly single-story. So, you know, we can encourage, uh, multi-story housing. That, that, one of the things that I, you know, we talk about preserving affordable housing and that's something, you know, folks have heard me talk about a couple times that, but well, my bigger theme is again, do we have a, a zoning code that is for Bloomington of nineteen seventy or a zoning code for Bloomington of twenty thirty, twenty forty? And this is clearly something that would move us in the, the direction of the future and not clinging to the past. What I wonder about as we look at lot sizes is, is also looking at maximum. Because what I've, I've talked about before, that I, I worry is coming. And I don't know if it's coming in two years or if it's coming in six years. Um, some of those old houses that Commissioner Olson was talking about that maybe are less efficient or, you know, I could see someone, those smaller lots, especially farther east you go where the older stock is, someone swooping up two of them, consolidating them, tear it out and build a big house. And so how do we, as we look at lot size, we talked about how about reducing, but do we also have a, a maximum? And, um, and I know we had, we talked about the eighty percent thing earlier today, uh, with the, the split we were discussing. So I also look at what are we going to do or what can we do to disincentivize some of that, which then leads to less of the affordable older stock that could be reinvested in? You know, you could have two lots currently that gets split into three if you had smaller area. But when you get two consolidated into one, I think that fights.
Good point.
Commissioner Olson?
Um, Commissioner Roman, you've just put me back a few years um, to a magazine that I actually, I think I asked Land LP to see if he could find it. And it, it showed, um, what I, I think the term it was tiny homes, at least that concept. And where, to go with your point, if, if, if a developer or if we as a city, maybe involved with HRA involvement, uh, were to find that there are three homes contiguous, that maybe that, they could be, uh, torn down because they've, they've served well and, 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 uh, and then these, these homes. And, and when we get into the assess, uh, accessory buildings, I think there was a comment about nine hundred square feet or something like that. And, um, and in terms of the size of area that some people want, including retirees, for example, uh, the development, uh, down in, uh, Penn American, the most, the newest one, I think there's fifty units that are in the range of about nine, five, five, I don't know, seven, eight, nine hundred square feet. So the picture that just was burnished in my head, and I can't produce it for you, is, is that there were homes that, that had a commons area and a picket fence kind of a thing. And so people could have little gardens and that kind of stuff if they wanted to and have some social interaction. And, and I'm not sure where they, they did, uh, cars, you know, they might've been under the house or something. I didn't see that in the picture, but, uh, and, and just another quick sidelight on that. My, my reading of, of the stuff that you gave us, which is great, um, doesn't include, it appears to me, uh, taking a stand on where we're going to be in terms of, of, uh, trans, uh, transit in the, in the future. Are we going to be mov, moving more toward transit development, oriented development? Or are we going to be getting more to cars that you call for and they come and pick you up and bring you to church or a dental appointment or something like that? So, uh, I, I think staff would, would be wise to at least take a look at that.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that is, that is something we'll kind of talk, touch upon a little bit later in the presentation. Um, cluster housing, uh, cluster development. And there's a couple, that's a broad definition, there's lots of different ways to do cluster development and kind of what you're alluding to, we'll talk a little bit more toward the end. Um, any last comments on this?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Huqueem?
Um, Commissioner Vicki Huqueem with the HRA Commission. Um, I would like staff to look into this. Um, I'm actually, where I live is a product of a split property already. Um, east side was split, um, multiple areas on the east side were split. So our neighbors were there first and our house is a split lot. Um, the one thing that I would really like you to, to, I guess, make sure of is making sure that when you do do split lots, that like they're equally, um, split and the fact that like garage sizes are different. We are not allowed a, a do, a two-car garage, we only have a single-car garage. So just that equity in that too, um, making sure it's equitable across the board. So I'm supportive of it. I think, um, it would help with the affordable piece of it because obviously our house was very affordable. Um, so, um, just, yeah, I support this, so thank you.
Yep, and that is an aspect when we start thinking about that, what are the other design standards? I mean, that was one of the issues, right? That with eleven thousand square feet, we can accommodate all our standards, so.
Yeah, Nellie Corveman, Plan Commission. Um, I also agree, um, with the, looking into those approaches, looking further, you know, doing more research into that and, and providing more information of what the different possibilities could be. Uh, but beyond the affordability part, um, it would be interesting to know also to kind of compare, um, between, among cities that have already had this experience or that had certain, um, square feet versus what we have in Bloomington, what we could possibly have in Bloomington and the impact that, um, this had had in the other cities in terms of, for example, living conditions, families, um, schools, you know, what make, what would make it different beyond the affordability part? Is what I would be interested in knowing more.
Yep.
I'll just chime in here, John Solberg, Chair of Planning Commission. And I think a lot of good points here, but, uh, and certainly lot size is, is one of the pieces that we need to look at. And I, I agree, there's probably minimal, uh, uh, opportunity here with lot size. But it, much like Commissioner Roman mentioned, looking at those, again, looking at minimums, but we got to look at the maximum and what does that unintentional, uh, consequence if somebody? the maximum and what does that unintentional consequence if somebody does that, purchases three lots? I think it also, just thinking about the lot size, and I live west where I have a larger lot, thinking about the, some of the other elements that I know we're going to go through here, I think are really the keys that start to push that to make pieces affordable for people. The lots, in my mind, are one thing, the density is another, obviously. But I think you talked a little bit about clusters and thinking about, not only that, but then just thinking about that larger zoning or the overlay where it might be appropriate in various locations to allow some additional housing stock, different types, that maybe normally wouldn't be approved in Bloomington, so.
Beyond just kind of your single detached, what are, maybe it's five homes that can have a common driveway that come out or something, yeah, more creative. Yep, got it. Okay. Another thing that bubbled up, so two-family homes just kind of naturally have a lower density, or higher density, obviously with, at about 7,500 square feet per home, then it's a way to get that affordability a little bit more. But we do have this additional standard of a 50-foot setback as opposed to our single-family homes that have a 30-foot setback. This one's a little more straightforward, the approaches are reduce the setback or keep it as it is. But this is one that we hear a lot from developers saying that this is, it's an extra cost to us, we have to do a longer driveway, it just adds more constraint to the site. The other aspect is it pushes it further back, it's a bigger mass, you can see this home right here, it's a double, it's two homes together, it's less imposing on the street if it's further back. Maybe this is more of a head nod, and is this something people are interested in reducing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then we alluded to this before, I think Commissioner Goldsman, you were talking about this, 500-foot. So currently, if you're within 500 feet, and we've tweaked this since I've been here to be on the same street, on the same block face, I believe we said, rather than as the crow flies. But we considered it a grouping. And kind of where this came from, I believe, and Glenn, you might have the history on this, but there's a developer who just kind of started to buy homes and do a two-family and just slowly kind of worked its way through the block, essentially doubling the density in that neighborhood. There's a way to circumvent our minimum lot size requirements. So that was kind of the response, and I don't know how long that's been. Seems like it's a fairly old.
I think it's maybe in the range of 10 years old. Originally, every two-family dwelling had to go to the city council for a conditional use permit. Staff proposed, well, let's do this administratively, kind of the compromise position. Council wasn't comfortable with that at the time, so the compromise was staff could approve it as long as there's not another one within 500 feet. If there was, they wanted the discretion to review it.
Can you give me a sense of what is 500 feet in terms of a city block?
Yeah, so a north-south city block in Bloomington is generally 660 feet.
And this is a picture from, I forget the road, but it's kind of by International Village. There's a whole street of duplexes, and they're all different, they're all different duplexes, and you just kind of keep driving and realize, oh, there's a lot right here.
So John Solberg, Planning Commission, again, and this is one that strikes me as, if we're looking for affordability, we're looking for density, but I, why are we restricting two-family homes to say that they're more imposing on a neighborhood? They're not any more imposing than some of the stuff on Overlook that I see. So when we think about that in kind of these other locations, any one of those lots could be built on right now by somebody that had too much imagination and be much more imposing on the neighborhood. So I think this is one of those things that it's more about development standards that might go with it rather than separation.
Right, and I would, building on, not trying to get ahead of where I know you're getting to eventually, but whether it's, we talked about again, can you, you don't necessarily always build up to a second story because we have another standard that says you have to have two garage stalls for every dwelling. I mean, four garage stalls is a mass of ground level plus all, exactly right there, right? Now, if you only had to have two parking stalls, or two garage, or maybe you didn't have to have any garage stalls, but you had to have at least two stalls that were off the street, whatever that may be. I mean, you could build a two-story home there with two parking, two garage stalls and enough street, and still pull it forward, and you could do lots of creative things with a smaller lot. So again, I'm not trying to get ahead of where you're going, but I mean, those, these things kind of all dovetail. And I know you know that, I'm just.
Another one where I'm seeing lots of head nodding that we can probably, yeah. And then the minimum home size, we currently, for our single-family homes, have 1040 square feet as the minimum, and we often say the 1040 Rambler. For our two-family, we decrease that a little bit to 960, and as Sean will get into, that corresponds with our ADUs have a maximum of 960. So it kind of, that gradation, that's why we're talking about this together, because it's kind of, it's all related, right, the scale or the spectrum of housing. This is another one where, you know, it bakes in a cost, right? If you have to have this minimum size, you have a minimum cost associated with that. But at the same time, it prevents, it creates a certain standard for Bloomington, so. Any thoughts on the minimum house size, any strong opinions or?
Again, I think it's something that is 1970 versus where we're, and again, also in that time, typically people were not utilizing lower levels like they are now, so, you know, our minimum size is typically considered as above grade. So would I care if someone brought in a project for, maybe it was a 1040 and it was 400 below ground and 650 above ground, so be it.
You know, another aspect is just that there's market demand, right, that if you're developing something, someone has to buy it, and if it doesn't function, it doesn't, it's not going to sell.
We've also been a little creative lately with, we had that project, that conversion project over in South Loop, granted that was rental, but I think those were five something?
I think they went down to as low as the 400s.
Yeah, I mean, so we've been exploring things like that, and again, do we, when should the standard be different for rental versus homes, and should it?
Well, and I think the, so John Solberg, Planning Commission, again, and it, this is one where I struggle a little bit about it, because if you talk about opportunity housing and somebody that doesn't have a house, and, you know, I think City of Minneapolis is doing it, tiny homes in various locations, you know, if we were to do, and again, thinking about some various opportunities that could exist, maybe for somebody that's previously not been in a home, having something as small as 450 square feet to be able to move up, I don't know what's wrong with that. And again, that might be various locations that we can think about, but it, again, increases opportunity.
I think this is Joanna Goldsman from the Planning Commission as well. I think that looking at the numbers and the demographics of our cities, we looked at the 70s, the median household size was 3.7, now we're down to 2.2. We don't need these 1040 houses like we did when we had larger households. Now, something that could be creative is you've got multifamily, multi-generational, that could mean a bigger house, but I really think a smaller house makes more sense for the people that are living here in Bloomington.
And one aspect not to forget is you can always add on to your house, right? If we, if we have the room, you can add in addition.
One of the things that the pictures and our conversation has not talked about is building up, you know? There can be apartments that are upstairs and downstairs, I lived in one myself at one point, so, you know, we've talked about suburban sprawl, and that was partly the lots being big and sprawling all over the land. But anyway, let's take a look at going up.
Just for clarification, this is Swat with the Planning Commission. For two-family districts, are two-family dwelling units, are those also allowed in the R1, the map that you showed us, also allowed? Okay.
Yep, two-family is included in the R1, it is.
I guess the question I had was, does Bloomington have design guidelines for reviewing new development? You know, you could allow for character, but you have guidelines in terms of like amount of windows, you know, building width, like Minneapolis does. I'm sorry, I keep referencing Minneapolis because that's where I am professionally at. But they, you know, Minneapolis has a, you know, minimums and maximums for lot sizes, but, you know, for folks who are worried about, you know, what the street looks like, the city can develop design guidelines that allows for certain heights in certain areas, you know, building, how many glass we can have, how many buildings, building width there can be, how closer, how back the garage can be if it needs to be attached or not, and whether that square footage would be added to the building if the garage is attached to the house. So I feel like a lot of these can be addressed through a design guideline, but obviously the minimum lot sizes and the rest can be spelled out specifically to deter specific developments, but.
Yeah, and to some degree, with our, especially with our two-family homes, we do have some more of those design guidelines, especially, I think there's a maximum size on the garage that could be in the front. So the two-family home gets a little more into the detail, but the single-family, it's less so, it's more of those general parameters, the setbacks and the, but yeah, I think that is something we can explore too.
And John Solberg, again, Planning Commission, and I think back to a development that we didn't recommend approval of, but it was garage, and then I think it was literally six feet on the side, and then that led to the house that was behind it. So I think having that flexibility, that it can be a home that doesn't have a front door, living room windows, bedroom windows at the street.
I'm sorry, say that again, that you don't want a building with no?
No, 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 that we, I think there's, that we should have that flexibility, because I mean, we looked at it in that medium-density development that was at Penn, and I liked the idea, the idea was essentially it was a garage with, whatever it was, four or six feet on the side, but that was the house going back. And I didn't see anybody complaining that, well, that wouldn't look good from the street, right? So I guess that's part of what I'm saying, is the standard of, we could do some of those things, as you mentioned in Minneapolis, but I think you can go to that level and say, well, it's got to have windows, it's got to have, why? If they have it on the other three sides, what's it matter? So.
Cheryl Lewis, HRA. I just, as far as the approach, because here again, you were sort of looking at the two approaches, I think probably looking at reducing the size requirements rather than removing them completely, I think that will allow for the flexibility we're looking for and not kind of opening it up to anyone, you know, you never know what would come forward if you had no requirements. But I think for sure, reducing the size requirements would be the approach to look at.
Right, and maybe if they want to go lower than a certain minimum, there's an additional review or something that could.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we also discussed this briefly, but the minimum parking requirements. So we do require for both two-family and single-family, four spaces per dwelling unit, two of which must fully be enclosed, and this cannot be achieved with a carport, it has to be an actual enclosed garage. There are, you know, benefits, we've kind of gone around it a lot tonight about, we still are a car-dependent city to some degree, and having that requirement provides two spaces outside the garage. Negative is it adds impervious surface, with the two-family, you've got a longer driveway that you have to accommodate. But if there's a snow emergency, you have a spot to put your cars. And that garage requirement also, whether it's used for parking or not, it could be used for storage, which, as we're talking about, the need for more storage, we're all-American, right? We can get more and more stuff, but some people do utilize, I know I have neighbors that that's their garage, is their storage space, they just park outside because that's what they do. So any thoughts? So some approaches were kind of reduce the two-car garage requirement, remove the requirement or allow, be more flexible on what that requirement is, carports, for example, reduce that total off-street parking or remove that minimum requirement. You know, we talk a lot about this in the multifamily, and we'll talk about that coming up too, that's another one of my items, but any initial thoughts on the four parking space requirements?
All right, go ahead.
Yes.
Mark Orson, HRA. I would encourage us to be more flexible and perhaps consider single-car garages as an option and fewer parking spaces. I'm at the stage of my life where I am, know that in some number of years, I will be leaving my 1092 square foot Rambler, and I've already started to kind of get a sense of what kind of housing I want to live in. And so I've looked at condos, I've looked at zero-lot line homes. I've been through the, one thing that really stands out is there's some roll houses, they're not inexpensive and they're not in my price range, but some roll houses over at Centennial Lakes, very dense, and very narrow streets, and very pleasant the way they're designed. And I could imagine even on a smaller lot, putting four of those roll-type homes in and single-car garages, or some of them I've looked at, not this development, there's enough buildings there in terms of, to make underground affordable to finally build, and I realize that's what, 30,000 a space or something? But if it's community, maybe that can work. So I would encourage us to get even more creative on some of these options. And my comment had to do with the fact I was talking about looking, is you get to a, you know, a lot of these developments, some are very popular, there's not an option, you might get one space, you might get two spaces, four, six, we're requiring two enclosed garage stalls and four additional spaces. And people are snapping up homes that have one or two spaces and maybe some community parking. So again, I think we have to get really creative about what we're open to.
Just for clarification, does two-car garage mean like two cars going in like we typically see, or are you talking about tandem? Like you can be back-to-back, only one car goes in and out? You could, certainly that would allow for more additional square footage for possibly storage or like two family, family with two cars going in for the winter and have, you know, less cars parked outside for all the, both units. But I do agree, especially if we're considering from the previous conversation about lot reductions, if we do allow for smaller lots, you know, I think having four-car garage facing the street is, I think, is just the hideous thing to look at from a design guidelines. If I'm a resident walking that block, going to a park or going to a bus stop, it just would be not, you know, eyes on the street, and the whole purpose of a house and design guidelines is to just be, you know, more, having more eyes on the street and whatnot.
And to answer your question, I don't think we would prohibit a tandem garage, it just, I don't think ever.
Yeah, it is allowed today, nobody does it just from, you know, market desirability, convenience.
We have retrofit, we see it a lot when people are constrained on their site already. I mean, that's an aspect of this discussion, is as we get more flexibility, we also allow flexibility for people on their existing sites to do creative things like that. But yeah, the tandem, we rarely see that in newer retrofit for sure.
Go ahead. Oh, hi, Aubrey Albrecht, I am with the Planning Commission. And I see this reduced total off-street parking requirement or remove the minimum off-street parking, that really needs to be part of this discussion, primarily, I think, because of those multi-generational families or families with many kids. I know we're decreasing the overall size of families in Bloomington, but that doesn't mean that that's going to continue into the future. And we, people still drive cars right now, and, you know, if they have four cars and we reduce it down to two and they have to park on the street overnight for multiple nights, I think that should be allowed. Yeah, I agree.
Ms. Joanna, again, I would echo what you commented on, I think one of the things we should look at, we talked about this balloon moving, and there's a lot of streets in Bloomington that people can't park. And I think... And I think we need to be mindful of if we remove these, these garages, which I'm all for, that it will impact the need for on-street parking, which then of course would probably impact snowplow and, and street sweep and all of the other types of utilities that we receive. But then I think it also, we have to think about how removing this will potentially increase the need for off-site storage or even just clutter in people's yards. I think about like snow blowers and shovels and, you know, all of the things that we'd normally store in a garage if it's smaller, where does that go? And so I think we just have to be mindful that if we do a one-car garage and that's a requirement, there's also size requirements that that's not so tight with somebody who has a big SUV that they can hardly get in and out, let alone store those necessary things to maintain their house. So there's a lot of things out in the middle of that, but I think it's a good proposal to, to look at, for sure.
Yeah, I would.
Phil with the planning commission. Yeah, I, I think I trend more towards a reduction than a removal. I get concerned about removal because it's not a market demand thing. We see the houses in Minneapolis go whether they have a garage or not. And what you end up with, and the thing I dislike the most about urban Minneapolis is how impossible it is to get around the streets. And maybe our streets are probably wider than theirs are, but it's just such a pain. I, I hate parking in Minneapolis, it's, it's a nightmare. I, I, I don't know if I'm ready, well, I don't want that feel in Bloomington. And so I think there needs to be a, if we, if we go with a reduction, I think we need to be smart about it and recognize maybe we only need one instead of two or something to that effect, but I'm not ready to get rid of it. I think that would have a dramatic change in the, in the feel of our neighborhoods. And I'm not sure that's why people live in Bloomington. I think, I think sometimes people move to Bloomington so they can get around and park in front of their parents' house or whatever. That's where I'm at.
Commissioner Thorson again, I think, and I would not want, you know, the Minneapolis situation either, but I think, like speaking for my neighborhood, everybody has a one- or two-car garage, everybody parks off, there are almost nobody parks on the street. And that street is much wider than Minneapolis streets. It's like a, it's like a state highway width. I'm really amazed when you see an aerial photo just how much of Bloomington is taken up by our streets and the width of the street. So I'm not sure we'd have quite the same issue if we're talking about housing here and there, that we don't have the requirement for the off-street, or off-street parking, garage, garage or not, or one or two garages or not, because our streets in most places are so wide that we could easily accommodate parking on both sides of the street, not that I'd necessarily want. We could accommodate that and not even approach what they have in Minneapolis. So I think we have to understand the infrastructure we have today, and we're not going to probably see a Minneapolis-type of situation if more people park in the street.
The difference though between our neighborhoods and Minneapolis neighborhoods is Minneapolis neighborhoods have sidewalks. So someone who's a dogs my dog on a regular basis, when I'm walking around a car that's parked down a street, I am nervous about it because they, I can't necessarily see what's around me. So yes, it's wide, is it necessarily make me feel pretty good as a pedestrian? Not really. I'd rather walk on the sidewalk, so I think we got to think about that too.
Right, and we've talked about, so, and the, to the question that you've asked, whatever the requirement is, whether it's two, and I see we're talking about four now, do I care if those two are in a garage or not? Not really. And anything about the cul-de-sac I live in, five homes, two of those homes, cars don't park in the garage. So it, you know, one of us been, I think, turned into a man cave, which, great, they enjoy it. But that's not really, we, we require this two-car garage and it's not being used for that. So unless we're going to enforce that people park in the garage, which we are not interested in, again, 1970, whatever. But then to the street thing, right, our streets are wide. Nobody will be surprised that, you know, I've talked about sidewalks. We keep rebuilding our streets, the same width, we don't add any sidewalks. You know, I was telling a fellow commissioner, I was in a dyna a month or so ago, and, you know, a fairly typical street had been shrunk. A sidewalk was put on one side, parking was limited to one side now. That's an area that's seeing tons of tear downs. But, so I think about, you know, is it, is it terrible that people might park on a street? You know, no. Certainly, we don't want the, again, I owned a house and two houses in Minneapolis where you weave, especially in the winter, it's, it's, it's a challenge. You know, a 16-year-old could learn to drive that way sometime, but, you know, the bullet on the bottom, but we prohibit on-street parking during snow emergencies. That's easy to, policy to fix, you know, we could go to alternate side parking if we had to. Or if we say, you know, we still want to keep some mobility, but we only are going to allow parking on one side of our street, I'm making this up. But I think reducing, agree, probably not eliminate, but I don't know if the reduction, whatever that reduced number has to be enclosed or not.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Okay, just real quick, Commissioner Huqueem, HRA, is just, I just want to make sure we're remembering our codes too, especially with like storage of, just because we're talking affordable housing doesn't mean these, this family may have a pop-up camper or something like that. So as soon as you talk about that, you have to talk about setbacks and all of that. In certain areas in Bloomington, do not have that option. So just when we're talking about this, I understand that it's looking further ahead, but it's stuff that, making sure that if developers are doing this, we're following the, the code and we're giving them the opportunity, I, a support reducing as long as we're making, enforcing that they are allowing for that code situations.
Cheryl Lewis, HRA, I think what I'm hearing, and I'm just going to stress it, is flexibility, not removing things, but looking at reducing things. But I think if the city becomes creative and flexible, then you're allowing, you know, each situation may be a little different, but we're open to new things, and I think that's really the key, flexibility. So I think this is a good one to look at.
That might be a good segue into the cluster development that we foreshadowed. This is an option. This is out there in other communities, this is Racine, Wisconsin. We're, this is a veteran's village, and actually to the south here is their kind of, their office building for the, the organization that operates this. But you can see, and this may be too extreme for Bloomington, but we wanted to demonstrate that, you know, that these, these are an option, you know. They're tiny homes, they're detached, they're, they've designed in a way that you do have kind of common space, and this one in particular has an office building right there that kind of serves it with the parking lot. This is another one, again, probably smaller than we'd probably like to see in Bloomington, but that option, you know, these are new homes, they're on foundations, we can create kind of that minimum standard and create, you know, five units that take up maybe two, two lots or a lot that kind of fit and meet those minimum standards. So this is something that, you know, we are seeing and potentially might want to look at creating the flexibility to allow this. And kind of, kind of boils all those issues down into one, right?
Commissioner Olson would, would like to submit that the picture that I would like to find again was a lot more visually attractive than these are.
And I'll talk to Landell, he'll, he'll probably remember right off, he's got that memory. But yeah, I mean, but these are, and this is in Oregon. But these were just two that I quickly found.
And those are, what, what's the size of those?
These are pretty tiny, these are probably closer to 150 square feet. They're pretty small, and you can see they're pretty tightly in there. Same with these, they're small, but you can see the, but you kind of get that idea. I mean, this is about the size of a lot in Bloomington. You've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So imagine two of those put together and you've got five, and then it's more close to that 400 square foot, which is akin to the apartment discussion we're having, right? So.
Would a cluster development be permitted? I don't know if they are now, but would it be permitted in the districts that we're looking at right now? In the R1, around single-family districts? Or if such thing is permitted, then would it come before a commission as a conditional use? Or would it be outright permitted, like building a single-family house?
Yeah, and it's, so it's currently not permitted. For one, it's higher than our density guidelines under the guide plan. But then, yeah, it just doesn't meet that, our standards. You know, the parking standard, the minimum size of 1040, you know. But moving forward, you know, seeing that this is much different than neighborhood character that we're talking about and some of these issues, it would probably make sense to have that additional, either some sort of overlay district or some sort of review process to ensure that they, you know, those site design characteristics are not going to have a negative impact on the, the area. Is this something people are maybe interested in pursuing?
John Solberg, planning commission, I think this, this is another opportunity to look at, again, locations, maybe something like this is a little bit more controlled through conditional use rather than just permitted. But again, here's an opportunity, looking at it and, you know, we just, and I go back to the, the apartments we just approved over on the east side, and there's a market for small, affordable locations. And that doesn't mean that they're, I, I certainly wouldn't put that as negative over where we approved that at all. So I don't know why we would think that that would be a lot different in a single-family zoned area, so.
Right, and someone who's interested in that 450-square-foot property might like to have a little yard outside versus you have to be stacked up eight stories tall in order to go in that size.
Cheryl Lewis, HRA, here again, I go back to that flexibility and creativity. You can't say no to something like this until we explore it. So I would definitely say to look into it.
Especially, I think, close to like transit would be really, you know, I think you'd get a lot of maybe younger people that don't want that apartment, and they just want to maybe start out in something like this. And who knows, they might want to stay there, you know? So I think this is definitely worth exploring.
You're asking about John Olson, HRA. You're asking for whether we want you to explore more, and, and we're kind of doing some of that for you, me included. But one of the things that I would, as a generality, several years ago, Blue Construction, I think was the name of the company, approached me when I was on city council, and it was at the time when the, when that mobile homes, what do we call them? Yeah, module, well, no.
The mobile home park.
Yeah, I mean, it's like pre-seventies codes and all that kind of stuff. And it was over there close to Devani's, that kind of hidden away. And they were interested in coming in and with the idea of doing something like doing smaller units. And, and so I think if, in terms of you exploring, I think we need to find out also what, what people in the industry are, are, you know, Blue Construction, for example, probably is still doing it. And they may have some ideas that are, are, you know, ready to go with pretty concrete stuff for you to bring to us. Mark Thorson again, HRA. I'm intrigued by the cluster home concept myself, perhaps not as small as the ones we saw there, but I, there, I know people are quite interested in that kind of a living situation. I can see it working best with some shared amenities. So maybe you have a very small home, but there's central laundry, or maybe there's, and I, I can actually envision it because I have some crazy friends who are talking about it ourselves, but, you know, some smaller homes, but still freestanding. Yes, they all have the normal things, kitchen, whatever, but there might also be a community building that has the laundry, might have a commercial kitchen for shared meals if the, you know, so I envision more like a, a community or cooperative kind of a thing. But I think that, again, if you have shared amenities and perhaps a parking area and workout space and thing, you know, like a condo except you have individual units, I think actually there would be a market for it. But I think we need to be open and prepared should a developer come and propose something like this and make sure that we don't have restrictions.
Mr. Palermo, I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask, where are we at with community outreach on some of these items?
This is the beginning. So that is part of the next steps would be to actually kind of talk to some developers and say, would this in fact have an impact? You know, we suspect it would, but does this change your bottom line at all and get that feedback from them? And as well as the city as well, we're talking, Sean and I are going to probably do a Let's Talk Bloomington and kind of have that broader discussion as well.
So I was going to try to hold this at the end, but I think it's too pertinent to hold on to. I think we need to tread lightly here. We're talking about a significant change, and, and we're focusing tonight on R1. You know, we have other zones in our city that allow for dense development, R2, R3. We're talking about R1, that's our lowest-density, single-family home residential neighborhoods. And if we allow a permitted use, and I know we're not at like the decision point tonight, but if we're talking about possibly allowing a permitted use in the R1 that could have significant field changes to a neighborhood, you got to remember, next to this development right here, are single-family homes. And we could receive, I fear, significant resident pushback if we permitted this use without extensive community outreach. I think we need to tread lightly here. I'm not saying I'm agreeing with it, not agreeing with it, but I would not want this to be a thing where we're sitting in this room, you know, how many people are watching this meeting right now at home six? I mean, nobody's watching us. And if we spring this on people and they don't find out about it until a week before the planning commission meeting, when we've got this canned and ready to go, it could be explosive, I fear, from a, a resident pushback, where if we're allowing permitted uses in a single-family zone, I, I really am concerned about resident pushback on that. We need to tread lightly, remembering we have other zones that allow for high-density development. And I think when you buy a home in a single-family neighborhood, you're, you're understanding that the zoning could change, but you have a general expectation of, of where you've moved into and what it's going to look like. And so, you know, when I move into in our, you know, like I personally live in a pretty dense neighborhood, and so I know what's coming, coming up around me. If I move to, you know, Resorces and 101st, whatever, I'm not anticipating something like that coming. And so I think we need to be very careful about, because we're talking about R1, and we need to really watch it with community outreach extensively before we proceed too far with this stuff.
Administrator Coleman.
Thank you, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. I just want to say in response to your question, Commissioner, regarding community engagement. So this has come forward not only by developers, by community members, by community organizations, and it has been through a lens of equity, racial equity, affordability, and addressing homelessness. And so looking at flexibility and options. So I will say, yes, of course, we would do community engagement and would really look into that and really seek comment and public feedback. But there are some community members that are asking these questions and bringing this forward, which is part of where staff got it from.
Absolutely, and I think we need to be, to your point, both in, open to both answers we might hear from our residents. You know, maybe, maybe a huge percentage want this, maybe a huge percentage don't, I don't know. I don't do community outreach, so I don't know. I just want to make sure that we're letting our community know, hearing them, and avoiding a potentially very explosive.
Yeah, I would just comment that I think I'm, I, I think we need to be really open-minded about potential options for creating more housing. I don't believe, you know, I think it goes without saying that there will be processes to go through, there will be appropriate places where we locate the various kinds of housing we're talking about. But I think we just need to be open-minded about this and consider these kinds of options. We may take them off the table, we may, for whatever reason, but I just, I think the purpose of our being here today is to, is to try to be open to options.
Just to have a discussion, we're just having a discussion.
Commissioner Olson again, I, I think, I'm just thinking that in terms of marketing, and, and I don't want to hammer this, but those pictures of cluster homes were a turn-off for me. Where do you find some that are others? And so it, you know, and, and the city has, you know, business and the city get-together kind of thing in this room and whatnot. And that, you know, tends to be kind of a select, self-selecting group. But, but I think if, if, if you connect with developers who do the kinds of things that we're talking about, and then ask them to do the, the sketches, whatever you call those kinds of things, or actually examples of where they have been built, and I think that would be critical because you are very correct that. critical, because you are very correct that, that there will be pushback from people about, what are you doing to my neighborhood? And one of the specifics is what's it doing to the value of my property? You know, and that kind of thing, and, and if you have a lot of people parking on the street, uh, you know, your comment about walking the dog or whatever it was, you know, that kind of thing, uh, all of those are, are going to impact. So I, I guess, I would suggest, I think there's going to be developers out there that could get juiced up about this.
Yeah, and just, uh, you know, like I said, the next steps is to talk to developers, and part of that, you know, we didn't want to approach someone about this and then a week later say, oh, planning commission and HRAs, and they weren't interested at all. So this was kind of, is this meeting, and I'm getting some head nods, that something worth pursuing so that, you know, especially when we go to the public, we have more details, more, you know, this is just what I grabbed from the internet. Yeah, yesterday, today, so.
I really like you, Mike.
Right.
I really like you. You do great work.
I would just, I would recommend a specific project, and I do not remember who did it, but it was a combination of both, it was a public-private partnership in northeast Minneapolis, and they built, I think it's five homes on two lots, but the way in which they situated it on the lot, it feels very single-family versus what this looks like.
And I, so I think that there's like a, there's a step approach where we're not going twenty
townhomes, we're going five single-family homes that are connected on one single lot.
Yep.
So I would suggest maybe starting.
And that's part of the discussion, too, is just, yes, cluster development, now the next step will be getting into those details, this is the spectrum, because it, there is, like we're talking, there's a large spectrum at which this could be, and obviously this is too much.
Yeah, and to Commissioner Thorson's point, this is a discussion. We haven't decided standards, we haven't decided any of those sorts of things, this is interest, trying to keep an open mind, and, you know, as we talk about these issues of affordable housing, um, equity, these are pieces that all can contribute to it. Where do they fit? We don't know. How do they fit? We don't know, um, but we're interested in learning more.
Yeah, and once again, you know, be, besides the, all the technical part that comes with this, um, what the impact that it has in communities depending of what you choose and how it has made that impact in other communities, whether it is in Minnesota, outside of Minnesota, what does it mean, you know, for the, for the community of people that will be living in those specific homes? Does it make a positive impact and why, or what are the risks also? And, you know, all this sociological, psychological perspective, too, I think it's important to know, to have that kind of research, um, to really make decisions of which, which direction we could be going in our city.
So, yeah, we kind of talked about that. So I will turn it over to Sean now.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Let me try to grab the presenter thingy here and.
Yeah, Grant in the control room, I think we need to get the WebEx back. There we go, thank you.
There you go. Thank you. So I'm Sean James, I'm another one of the long-range planners here with Mike, and, uh, we're talking about ADUs a little bit more in depth here. Can share my screen.
And Grant, you can make it full screen again.
There we go, okay. So a little bit of background, um, I guess first, you know, we're talking about flexibility, that's a common theme, and, you know, ADUs is one more way to introduce some flexibility in our single-family residential districts. So we actually allow ADUs already, an ordinance was adopted in 2009, and, uh, what's allowed is that they're attached or internal to the single-family house. And since then, only two ADUs have been approved, however, I'm not sure any have been built, actually, but two have been approved. And then a couple of years ago, that seems to come up with cities periodically, a couple of years ago, um, we introduced a new ordinance to, um, so create flexibility or remove some of those standards. So one was to allow lots that don't meet that minimum lot size to still have a, an ADU, so say they're nine thousand instead of the minimum eleven thousand. Another staff proposal was to allow lots that don't meet our minimum parking to have an ADU, however, that was not, um, adopted with that ordinance, council was not in favor of that proposal at the time. And then another adjustment was, that was part of the ordinance, was to, um, kind of reframe how we talk about ADU sizes. In the ordinance, we only allow an ADU to be thirty-three percent of the, um, the building floor area. And so before we were calculating that, it's, the ADUs is part of the thirty-three percent, now we don't, just create a little bit extra square footage that they could amount to. So backing up more broadly, some objectives for this project that staff has identified, um, kind of retaining the same theme that Mike has, has mentioned, is, you know, we're certainly interested in creating more affordable housing opportunities, um, and really just to expand opportunities for aging in place, um, you know, as people want to downsize but stay in their neighborhoods or stay on their property, um, as well as like life cycle housing, being able to house, um, you know, in-laws and other family members. Another objective is to create, uh, you know, allow people to create rental space on their property for additional income, you know, whether that's to, um, you know, income to help support, uh, and upkeep for that property or just to stay on the property. Uh, and then another objective is just to create more housing units, you know, introduce that flexibility, but still minimize the negative impacts that associated with, you know, more units, more people. So a little bit more nuances about what's allowed today and what's not. So, you know, detached, even if it's a detached garage, we wouldn't allow an ADU then to be on that detached structure. If it's attached, um, it's generally allowed. There are a set of standards we can talk about, now if it's an upper level, internal or lower level, those are generally allowed. One caveat, though, is, you know, if it's a single-story house and you want a basement ADU, well, if they're both the same floor area, um, then that wouldn't be allowed because ADUs got to be smaller, so there's that. Um, you know, above garage is, is a dashed line there because we have a provision that the ADU share, um, wall space with the four-season living area. And so, you know, if you have this, um, a lot of our houses are connected to the garage, but then if you've got another unit above the garage, well, that ADU might not be attached to the four-season, four-season living area. There's ways around it, you know, you can create that internal walkway, but then you might not be able to park two cars, so all these standards kind of butt up against each other. Similar with garage conversion. Now, I didn't circle this one, technically, you could convert your garage into an ADU, but there's still that parking requirement, so you have to have the two enclosed spaces. Uh, let's see. So what we're finding really, you know, we only have the two approved, almost everyone that comes in with the, wants to do an ADU, um, as long as it's attached, they can probably do what they're thinking of today without having it be an ADU. Because really, as long as, um, what's proposed to be an ADU, if it shares an internal connection to that main living area, and it's just subject to our single-family standards. So we would only consider it an ADU if it's completely walled off from that single-family area and has its own separate entryway. So, no, concerns kind of broadly, congestion, you know, whether that means more people, more units, more, um, you know, more cars out on the street. Impacts are really more on those adjacent neighbors. And then there's concerns to, you know, long-term, if the, um, you know, ADU becomes, uh, underused or, you know, left alone, um, would it be reused in like office space or some other non-residential use or, or just left dilapidated? I don't know if ADUs have been around long enough to get to that point, but it's a future concern. But we do have a list of standards here then to offset those concerns, and I'll touch on some of them here. But common barriers we find, you know, in speaking with other cities, a lot of people want to do like a detached unit, or when people think ADUs, they usually think of the, uh, unit above a garage. Occupancy is another barrier, so, you know, by only allowing two people in an ADU today, it means, you know, a couple without, with kids cannot occupy an ADU. Owner occupancy is a, is a hot topic that comes up often now, a lot of cities are removing that requirement, uh, and it just means that the owner be required to occupy either the ADU or the, um, single-family house. It hasn't come up as much in Bloomington, we don't have many ADUs to begin with. I get the sense that it's more common with, you know, detached units, people wanting to rent out both of the detached, um, structures, but it might be an issue with attached, if you just haven't encountered it as often. Minimum parking, so that one was, uh, brought up with a couple of years ago, however, part of the council was comments at that time were too, were that they wanted to take a broader look at just our single-family parking standards altogether, and that just create, you know, flexibility for ADUs. There's concern, too, with on-street parking. And then really the main barrier with ADUs, you know, even with cities that are the most flexible with them, is just the cost of constructing them, it deters most people. I think speaking with archi, one architect, he commented that, you know, of all their inquiries, only about five percent end up, uh, being constructed just because it, they realize the cost is too much in the end. I do want to touch on parking quick, so we don't require any additional parking for ADUs, but we require those four spaces, as Mike mentioned, for, um, single families, so, uh, we do have quite a few single-family homes that don't meet this requirement, roughly around ten percent, uh, you can see them dotted here in the orange. Um, you know, a lot of these houses were just built before the standard was in place, uh, and they have, you know, a one-car garage, and so they might have a really big driveway, can park four cars, but, uh, that one-car garage doesn't meet our standard, and so an ADU, uh, couldn't go there. So cost, you know, it's tough to talk about cost, if you Google ADU, you'll find a picture like this, you know, they're, they're the luxury units, um, they're all new builds and, and frankly, they're quite expensive. If you Google cost on ADUs, you can probably find a whole range of people doing it for just a few thousand. It really depends on, you know, what's there today, if it's just a simple renovation or not, and, um, a lot of cities like us, you know, we require it to be a dwelling unit, so we want a kitchen, we want a bath, but it's got to be fully connected to utilities to, um, support itself, and so that adds up, especially utilities. And really, if it's detached, it's usually a greater cost, just, um, it means further connecting those utilities. So back to this slide, you know, I'm listing the standards here, and I want to go more in-depth on the occupancy and bedroom limits as well as, uh, what detached looks like. And I want to talk more about, you know, would allowing detached ADUs help us meet our objectives? And we can also talk about, you know, what the concerns would be, so, you know, would it help us increase affordable housing? Um, I can't quite put a plus here, you know, they're, they're quite expensive, don't know if one could be made in an, into an affordable unit in and of itself, um, that would be difficult, uh, but as Mike mentioned, they help increase supply. I think more importantly, it's, it's really about flexibility, so, you know, if you want a house and you want to house your in-laws, you know, they can't afford to buy their own house in the area, then this is a, an easy option for them. Um, and there's, there's a variety of scenarios where people might want, uh, an ADU, and so it, are they affordable in terms of, you know, if you look at percent AMI and if they could offer affordable housing? Maybe, maybe not, but sometimes it offers a more affordable housing than, you know, buying a whole other house. So, yeah, I mentioned, sure, they can help expand age and place and life cycle housing. A lot of people, um, you know, if they're going to house their in-laws, they still want to have some sort of detached, um, uh, space, you know, maintain separate lifestyles but nearby. Same, same issue with rental space, you know, detached is a little more favorable. Uh, and then negative impacts, we'll take a look at a couple here more in detail. Now, it's come up in the past with these longer lots that we have, you know, there's concern that someone might place an ADU way in the back of one of these and have it be closer to their neighbor, neighbor's lot than their own house. You know, there's certainly standards we could, um, look at to prevent that, but, um, you know, more often than not, just the cost of doing that, extending the utilities out that far, it would be quite pricey, and I'm not sure it'd even be feasible, uh, you know, depending on a number of factors. And then another one that comes up often is, you know, if someone was to put an ADU above a garage, you know, what sort of height impact would that have on the neighbor? It might, you know, and this, this picture is, um, it's, it's a good demonstration of what that impact looks like, however, it's a little misleading, too, because we do have height standards in place. You know, this is maybe a couple feet off the property line, but we would require, um, right now in the code, we require any living area to be ten feet off the side property lines, and then even at ten feet, it can only go twenty-four feet tall. So we already limit height for single-family dwellings today, you know, an ADU above a garage then might not be all that more impactful. Um, and then the occupancy bedroom limits, too. Now, sure, if you allow more people in ADU, there's more people to, you know, pay for it, uh, so it might make it a little more affordable. With the expanding age and place or life cycle housing, uh, I think it's, it's, if you remove the occupancy limit, it would just introduce more flexibility, so, you know, if you want to downsize, if you have kids somewhere, but you want to, you know, hang on to the option that you could house them for a certain amount of time someday, or it, it just increases more options to do that, to make use of your dwelling area. And then same with the rental space, so, uh, you know, certainly if you, if you can have more occupants, more bedrooms, you can make more income. Negative impacts, you know, a lot of those would be associated with more people on a lot, but at the same time, in our single-family standards, we really don't regulate people per lot, it's more, you know, size of bedroom, uh, regulations according to building standard. And, um, on the left are the, um, ADU size standards that we have in place today. If we were to remove occupancy bedroom limits, on the right is the property maintenance code, so this is what we would require for any new builds and, um, you know, really looking at these numbers, a three-hundred-square-foot ADU, which is our minimum size, you really could only fit two people in that anyway, but some of the larger ADUs, you could fit, um, a few more in, given that property maintenance code. And so quick city comparison, you know, some of our neighbors don't allow ADUs altogether. Richfield allows detached ADUs if they're associated with a garage. I know Burnsville, um, was one of the cities recently updated their standards, so they, um, used to only allow detached if it was on a lot with a, um, uh, at least an acre lot, one acre, and now they just allow them. they just allow them regardless of size. And they don't have a limit on occupancy, but they still have the two-bedroom limit. And then Eagan standards closely match ours with that regard. So, Mike mentioned, you know, we're certainly looking at more ongoing study meetings, but I think engagement is the next step and get the broader residents' perspective on these, especially the detached. And the Let's Talk provides a good avenue to do that online anyway. We'll have to talk more about in person as this project moves on. So, yeah, I focused mostly on, you know, should detached ADUs be allowed? Should those occupancy limits be removed? And then, you know, this is early in the project, should we look at any other flexibility or standards with regard to ADUs? So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. So, since Burnsville passed their detached ADUs, have they had any projects that have come up because of that?
I'm not sure yet. I noticed that the other day, that they recently changed their ordinance, and so I think they changed it because one or two people wanted a detached unit, but I'm not sure many have been constructed since.
I ask because I wonder if it really is going to make that big of a difference, if there's not really an appetite for ADUs. Is that, this would be a low priority in my opinion, but that's, that's my opinion on it. I think time should be spent elsewhere. I think typically when you see an ADU, it's usually housing, you know, your in-laws or your kids, you know, that's, I think, we see a lot of it. I don't think that's necessarily creating a lot of affordable housing, and I think we should spend our time elsewhere for thinking about affordability.
I think, a question more in a comment, when would we allow this with duplexes? Again, my expertise, going back to Minneapolis, and I don't see as the city comparisons, Minneapolis was listed. I worked on our ADU over there and the outreach as well with my colleague who are planners. So, we did have a lot of engagements over in that part. Obviously, Minneapolis is completely different in character to Bloomington, but when it comes to density and the growth in, you know, residents that we're expecting and affordability that, that we're trying to address, I definitely do think we should allow it. I think if residents who possibly have the capacity on their lots and financial capabilities, if they're educated enough and aware of this resource, I'm sure they would consider it as a revenue for, a resource revenue, but also allow for more residents on the lot. I do think some design guidelines should exist. I do think a detached option should exist. And, you know, the three options were attached, detached, and interior, and a lot of the single-family homes that I've seen might not have basements, or if they do have a basement, then what does the square footage look like if there is limitations? One thing that was really a hot topic in Minneapolis was obviously the occupant, the owner living in one of the units. Otherwise, it becomes like a typical rental. And if the owner lives on the property, then the care that the property, you provide different care if you live on the property in any of the units. It's different, you maintain the property better than a landlord would. So, that's something that was a very big deal over in Minneapolis in terms of conversations, and I don't think that has been lifted. But we are allowing the ADUs with duplexes now, and obviously, we got rid of single-family districts altogether, but if we're talking about allowing for densities, and we are now considering densities and reducing single lots, I should say lot areas in R1 districts, then why not also allow ADUs?
Administrator Coleman.
Thank you. I just have a question for Commissioner Abdi. In Minneapolis, I wanted to clarify and ask, if you had a duplex, if it was zoned duplex zoning, and the owner was going to live on site, then you were eligible to make a triplex, and that unit counted as an ADU unit in Minneapolis, correct?
Correct. But we would, at the time, we were definitely staying away from the term triplex, but it would technically be a third unit significantly smaller in square footage. Generally, you know, if it's a detached, for example, it would be only one bedroom with certain limit in terms of that square footage of that living space. But, yeah, it would technically be three units on the lot. The owner lives in one of the units, rents out the two larger units, brings income, but also provides affordability and more housing opportunities. But at the same time, you know, the character, character of the property would be maintained through design guidelines for, if you're doing an addition to the garage as part of the larger single-family or duplex development guidelines that we would have in general. But if somebody were to propose something like one of those longer lots that you showed, if they're building something way back in the, if you're tucking it way back, then you can require setbacks. You know, you can require height requirements, you know, how many windows they can have and all that kind of stuff. But at the same time, the big difference would be that they would be significantly smaller in size, and because we're not going to be, if we are not going to require additional parking, then Minneapolis did not.
Yes, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. HRA John Olson. To answer your question, I'd like it to be explored more. I would go in that direction. And I'm thinking of two situations. One in Duluth, I was a youth director, and one of the families that was very involved in the program had what they called mother-in-law room or whatever. And there was somebody who came to council several years ago, and she was talking about, you can hear it in her voice, she wanted to have her mom, I think it was, or dad, close by where they could, could help, you know, be, be there for each other. And sometimes it is both ways, taking care of young kids or something like that. And in my own case, I currently live in a, in a co-op, but I used to live on Second Avenue, and it was a pretty large lot. But we added on a 14-by-16 room, including the basement below it, and that, that's adequate for having a small kitchen and a bathroom and that kind of stuff. And it, there was absolutely, I mean, it was virtually no change in the look of the neighborhood for that issue in terms of selling these kinds of things to that. So, it, it seems to me that maybe that there's a, a kind of a case-by-case, but I think if, if we move into this thoughtfully, and we, we have proposals, and we look at it, I don't know how we do this in terms of standards and codes and whatnot, but that we have some experimenting by somebody comes forward with, like that woman said, you know, and in their particular case, adding on a 14-by-16 like I did would, would be a relatively inexpensive thing. I think it costs $16,000 or something like that, or no, more like $35,000 or something, but not the 100 or 200. And, and so, I, I think that it could help a lot of family situations, and in terms of renting out to friends or something like that, I mean, that maybe gets a little bit different, but, and we've recently had younger people who've gone to college or, you know, gone to extra education and couldn't get a job. So, we've had multi-generational with the 20-somethings or whatever, and, and their 40, 50-something parents. So, I, I think, and, and maybe, maybe there's more peace in the family if you end up having a, you know, when we talk about lifestyle differences, that you can shut the door and insulated walls or whatever.
I would say, just to tick through the questions you have here, detached, I think yes, especially if we're talking about potentially above garage. We have a lot of chunks of the city where the garages are not attached, and I think the shared wall rule is not really helpful. Limits on occupants removed, I think that's fine. Number of bedrooms, if you really want to be an ADU, I think too, is probably plenty. The question about legally non-conforming parking, that goes back to our conversation earlier about parking. So, if our, if our standard goes from two garage stalls down to perhaps two off-street parking spaces, that, of those dots, probably almost all of them suddenly become conforming. So, if we solve our parking regulation, we solve the parking question for that. And then the other one was the, I would also look at the proportion question, because, again, especially for maybe a lower-level unit, you know, I think it's fine if someone wants to rent out a lower level, and maybe it's equal to the upper level. And again, aging in place, revenue, whatever that is. So, that, that's in the others, but to the questions you asked, those are some thoughts.
Would a rental license be required? Obviously, if you are leasing it, but if you have multi-generational purposes, should, because it would be like a second or a third unit, depending on which, if it's single-family or duplex, if we're allowing that, would we allow, would require, I should say, licenses regardless of who's occupying that space?
If you're related, you wouldn't. This is kind of a point we, I don't think we brought up, but a lot of times when people come to the counter and are asking about ADUs for their family members, and they find out, oh, I could just have my family members live with me, I don't need to get an ADU, then they, you know, that's, a lot of times, that's satisfactory. So, it's adding that extra separation, and only when it becomes, I believe, a rental, then it requires that rental license.
Yes, Commissioner Huquey.
Thank you. I think it, it is worth, I agree with the detached being allowed. I think one thing that I've noticed is I think we're going a lot more multi-generational, and I think culturally too, we have to look at that. If we're talking about equity, we have to look at other cultures and how they live, and they do live multi-generational. And I think that by not allowing that, we're kind of disservicing them in our city. So, if we want to welcome all, I think we really need to look into this a little further. I definitely agree with detached. I think the number of occupants can be removed. I think the number of bedrooms is pretty, pretty, I think it's okay. I think, I think maybe depending on situational, I think that there might be a way to, you know, work with that, and depending on what the real reason is. And then, you know, just with parking and things, we've kind of talked about that before, and I think we just need to be flexible with that. And, but I do think it's something that we really need to be open to, because I see it a lot more. I see a lot more multi-generational just with where things are going. So, thank you.
John Solberg from Planning Commission, and, yeah, again, back to your questions, detached ADUs. I think that's a, it should be an option folks can look at. I, I mean, affordability, I mean, who knows? It's a question from one standpoint, but I think life-cycle housing, and having that ability to build on a space that maybe future on homeowners could convert to something else. But my old neighbor would love to live with her daughter, but she really, really likes her independence. So, she's 96-years-old, still living in her house, but that opens up a house that was built in the late 50s that hopefully a new family could, could afford to move into. So, I think that's a good piece. Limited on occupants, I, I think that's self-policing in its, in its own right. Number of bedrooms, I think in some ways, maybe that could be proportional to the size of house. I mean, you went through the, the numbers, I think, on our houses with single-car garages, we must know the number that have three-bedroom homes, as long as it were less or one-third less or something. Flexibility of other ADUs, well, one of the things thinking about, and you mentioned it, was just maybe, again, Commissioner Roman, his basement? Yeah. To me, that's a no-brainer, or an upstairs, if somebody wants to. When it comes to detached, maybe that's where some proportionality comes to it, and I was just thinking about it. 1,096 square feet, Commissioner Thorson, was that correct? 1,096 square feet?
On my home?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, in a typical Bloomington two-car garage, 20 by 20 or thereabouts, he's at 400 square feet, 30, that 33%, just if you wanted to make an addition on the backside or on the top, it just doesn't make sense, does not compute. And then the other thing that you mentioned, Mike, was just really about the fact that I think these dwelling units couldn't be within so many feet of a property line. And I'm thinking about it, like my old garage was five feet off the property line, so therefore, you're already taking that number of houses off of or potential additional dwelling units flexibility from the rolls if you don't allow it to be no closer than, or that sort of thing, than existing property or, or facilities.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just talking about two stories, we have a number of them on the east end of town, you know, farm homes that were, or whatever. And, and I'm flashing back also to studies, there's a requirement, I think, that foreshadowing, and so I think that needs to be built into this if we end up going up some, you know, and, and not, not the McMansion kind of thing. I mean, the fear that happened with that was, I think, is much the massiveness of it all, but, but also shadowing and things like that, so we need to be looking at that, I believe.
I noticed the planning commissioners are just going in, and I think you have a better order. I apologize for that message here. Something that I've noticed, if we're encouraging, you know, this direction of housing and, you know, housing opportunities and changing our code, I know city programs is not a part of a conversation that's not listed here. You know, how do you encourage? Creating something does not necessarily mean it would happen. Are there programs that the city is also considering in addition to the opportunities in land use changes that we're discussing right now? You know, what's on the menu is, the council up to, you know, helping fund, you know, are there loans, grants to encourage, support, whatever the case may be? I think that would definitely bring interest from residents to look into and say, this is an opportunity, what else can I do, or how else can I do? Because it would be useless if folks are not able to utilize or create these housing opportunities if they're not just supportable or doable, I should say.
Very pointed. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Another idea flashed in, the Urban Land Institute, and I didn't know this till I'd lived in Bloomington for a long time, was major in the city planning what was initially called, I don't know, what's now called South Loop and, and the Mall of America. And so, I think they're, they're another resource you obviously know about. I mean, you interact with them, so it might be that, that, you know, engaging them might give some free support for you doing what you do in terms of staff time, and maybe also some connecting to money, I don't know. I'm totally done now.
Commissioner Olson, you say that at our meetings.
All the time.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lewis, I just wanted to say, and this is something that I just thought as we were doing this discussion, I thought of the last year going through COVID and how we were so, a lot of us were separated from our families, and I just think something like this and looking at detached ADUs and that kind of thing, there may be more interest out there now. I know I am closer to my family now, now that we can get together again, and people may want to bring their family closer, an older relative, or bring the kids home. I know a lot of kids probably did come home and had to sleep in the basement for a year. So, I just think it's a really good idea to explore this, because it's just another opportunity for people to bring family home, so.
Yeah, good point.
Okay.
Good.
So, yeah, I think I got clear direction with that. Thank you.
You know that.
And I think Mike might have a few more slides.
Yeah, well.
Maybe.
Running kind of low on time, I think. For one, my computer is 10% busy, and it's already nine o'clock, so, I mean, I think this, if it's all right with Glenn, maybe we bring this up at another study session, and maybe it's concurrent or maybe it's separate, but this is more about the things that staff, it's operational efficiency. So, the things that are taking us a lot of time, and for what reward are we getting, you know? We spend a lot of time on prevailing lot lists, calculating things like lot lists or accessory buildings or prevailing setbacks, and how often are they or prevailing setbacks, and how often are they really preventing something from happening? So, that, that's kind of what that was going to discuss, but we can discuss that in more detail in another study session.
That works. I think you would get a head nod generally from the Planning Commission to, to be more efficient in those, in those manners. Not to be more efficient, not that you're not, but that we recognize that the budgets are one thing and providing the best value is certainly something we'd be looking for, so. All right, Chair Lewis, do you have to conclude your meeting or?
Well, I do, but I would just like to make the comment that we really appreciated this opportunity to collaborate with the Planning Commission. I think this was a really good opportunity. When we started, I wasn't sure. It was like, God, are we going to be here all night?
We, we do have a cutoff of 11, just so you know.
The institute had that last year, so.
But it was a really, really good discussion, and I really appreciated that. And I do have to close the meeting, our meeting. So, do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So, moved.
Commissioner Thorson has moved to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? He's not talking, but Commissioner Olson, a second by Commissioner Olson. So, it has been moved by Commissioner Thorson, seconded by Commissioner, or Olson, that we adjourn the meeting. Administrator Coleman, would you do the roll call vote?
Huquey.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, HRA, for attending tonight. Appreciate that. All right, for Planning Commission, we have two issues, two items still left on our agenda. First one being the September 23rd, 2021 meeting synopsis. I'll give HRA a moment to, to exit the room, and then we'll continue. All right, Planning Commission, we have the September 23rd, 2021 Planning Commission synopsis in front of us. For everybody's information on this one, commissioners that were absent that night were Commissioner Corman, Commissioner Goldsman, and Commissioner Abdi. The rest of us were in attendance. And at this point, I would take a motion to approve September 23rd, 2021 Planning Commission.
So, moved.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the September 23rd, 2021 Planning Commission synopsis. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining, say aye.
Aye.
And any against the motion, same sign. All right, motion passes. I know the names were good. Moving on to the next item, which is really Planning Commission policy and issue updates. Mr. Markergard.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Quick look ahead at upcoming meetings. November 18th is our next meeting. On that agenda, we have the review of the capital improvement program. Actually, let me back up. November 4th is our next meeting. At that meeting, we have our three transportation items we've talked about previously. And then we did add an item for adoption of your 2022 meeting schedule. So, a packet just came out today. You'll have that. And then, two weeks beyond that, November 18th, again, capital improvement program. And then you continued the South Town redevelopment item to that meeting as well. So, that's on that agenda. And then looking a little bit further out, December 2nd. So far, we have privately initiated code amendments related to pandemic testing facilities. We have our miscellaneous issues ordinance on that agenda. And then potentially the residential livability standards. So, that's what we have coming up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markergard. Any questions for Mr. Markergard or any new items you'd like to bring to the rest of the Planning Commission or to staff's attention? Not seeing any. That would conclude our last item for this October 28th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. And with that, we'll adjourn our meeting tonight. Thank you all.